Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2017 Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting. I wanted to call this meeting in order. I'd like to start out tonight. We have Rahim Samji from the Ismail Muslim Community Church leads us in the invocation, and Officer Jeff Daniels from Cobb County Police Department leads us in the place of allegiance. Rahim?
Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. In the name of God, the most beneficent and most merciful, good evening. My name is Rahim, and I'm a member of the Shiite Smiley Muslim community of Cobb County. Thank you for the opportunity to begin today's session. The Smiley Muslim community celebrates diversity and embraces pluralism. The role of the intellect, pursuit of knowledge, and sharing of time and talent for betterment of society is part of our value system, values that form the bedrock of our American identity and gives us hope for a better future for ourselves and for our children. As you start your meeting today, I would like to share a verse from the Holy Quran that reminds us of our common humanity and our moral calling. Quote, "O mankind, fear your Lord, who created you from a single soul, and from it created its mate; and from the pair of them scattered abroad many men and women," end quote. His Highness the Al Khan, the forty-ninth hereditary Imam of the Shiite Smiley Muslims and a direct descendant of the Prophet Muhammad, may peace be upon him, encourages a spiritual, intellectual, and ethical understanding of Islam that draws upon the universal values of compassion, pluralism, justice, and service for the common good. At the Jodidi Lecture delivered at Harvard in 2015, His Highness Sher, I quote, "A cosmopolitan society regards the distinctive threads of our particular identities as elements that bring beauty to the larger social fabric. A cosmopolitan ethic accepts our ultimate moral responsibility to the whole of humanity," end quote. This moral responsibility is what Hazrat Ali, the first Imam of the Shia Muslims, advised his friend Malik Ashdar, the governor of Egypt, in 658, on his responsibility as an administrator entrusted with the governance of public affair. He advised, quote, "What should gladden the heart of an administrator is that the state is run on principles of justice, equity, and equality, and that love and trust emanate from the citizen towards him," end quote. Honorable members of the Cobb County Commission, I wish you well in your deliberations today and every day. It is my hope and humble prayer that you find joy in your public service and that your efforts are blessed with insight and wisdom. May you find strength to make just choices and resolve matters fairly and equitably for all citizens. We pray for your success and for the peace and unity of our citizens. Our community is grateful for the invaluable service you provide and thanks you for your dedication. Thank you and have a great meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight, before we start tonight's meeting, a couple administrative notes. I'd like to have the board's consensus in moving Tab 12, which recommends the appointment of Scott Barfield to be the property management director. I'd like to move that from Tab 12 to right after the presentations. He has his family here tonight, and I think I'd like to support them. Sorry? Little ones need sleep. So is that okay? Does that meet approval of the board? Okay, I appreciate that. And then we're going to be pulling... Let me ask in consensus to pull Tab 13. After doing some further research on that agenda item, there was some information brought to our attention by a member of the Cobb community, and we thought it was best that before we present this to the board tonight that we do some further research. So I'd like to have consensus in pulling Tab 13 tonight. Does that meet the board's approval? All right, so we're going to pull Tab 13. With that, we're going to go to Presentations. And I think I have the first one. Could I get Dr. Price and his family and supporters up to the front, please? I'd like to read a proclamation tonight. Whereas Dr. Nelson L. Price is pastor emeritus of Roswell Street Baptist Church, where he served as a senior pastor from 1965 to 2000, and during that time, not only did he minister to those in his church community, but also to Cobb County residents and people throughout the state of Georgia. And whereas Dr. Price holds degrees from the University of Southeastern Louisiana, the New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary, Mercer University, and Hannibal LaGrange College, and holds countless offices and various conventions throughout the state, including being a member of the trustees for the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And whereas, he has authored nineteen books and has been authored with numerous prestigious awards, such as the Boy Scouts of America Good Shepherd Award, the Cobb Bar Association's Liberty Bell Award, the Marietta Daily Journal Citizens of the Year Award, the Georgia Trend Magazine, one of Georgia's 100 Most Influential People, and various other extremely honored positions. And whereas, Dr. Price has appeared before and inspired many diverse groups, including preaching the inaugural message before President Jimmy Carter, his cabinet, and staff on his inauguration in the morning of 1977. And whereas, on November 24th, Dr. Price will turn eighty-six years old and continues to be an important community member who inspires with his wit and wisdom. Now, we, therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Dr. Nelson L. Price for his unwavering commitment to our community, his leadership, and his many years of public service. Signed by this board, this is twenty-second day of August, 2017. Happy birthday.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I greeted you tonight, I said, "I'm so proud of what you all are doing." You very thoughtfully thought I was referring to what you did here tonight. What I was referring to is what you do every day as members of this council. I pray for you regularly, and I rejoice to live in a county that has good government. I feel like I have had the good fortune of riding a tidal wave of good people doing wonderful things in a marvelous community. We are humbled to be a part of it and thankful for the people such as are here tonight and for the commission and what you've done tonight. Thank you, God bless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and God bless you, too.
Dr. Nelson, please keep praying for us. Don't take us off the prayer list.
Mr. Cupid, the Police Athletic League?
Good evening. Tonight I have opportunity to recognize our participants of Cobb Police Athletic League Track Program. So if we have anybody from that program who's here with us tonight, please come join me up here on the stage. I see some parents who were regulars out there. Please come join your children. You are just as committed to this program as they were, if not more. We'll give you an opportunity to take a picture. How are you? Good, good to see you. It's a reunion to see some of these athletes up here today, as my child also participated in this program, and he's at soccer practice tonight, or else I would have him up here with me. But wanted to take time to recognize the significant efforts of our police officers, our families in Cobb County, particularly the South Cobb area, and our young children for their commitment to our track program and their success. We have a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas Cobb Police Athletic League is an innovative nonprofit organization striving to make positive impacts on the lives of our children ages four through fifteen. Cobb's Police Athletic League focuses on juvenile crime prevention through athletic and recreational activities for Cobb County's high-risk neighborhoods, primarily in South Cobb. And whereas, through a variety of activities, our young people are surrounded by the positive influences of adults, police officers, and volunteers in controlled and supervised environments. Many children who participate have never previously had the opportunity to participate in a track program. Some of those reasons include costs associated with organized sports. Whereas Cobb County's Police Athletic League's Spring and Summer 2017 Track Program was extremely successful, participating in several championships, including the Junior Olympics. Many of our track athletes won regional, state, and national competitions, setting records, and were honored as All-Americans. And whereas, the cornerstone of the track program is mandatory parental involvement, which is why you see so many parents up here today. Our parents also serve as volunteers assisting at meets and practices. The PAL Program's goal is to continue to grow our young adults by adding more sports and expanding to different parts of Cobb County. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby express our pride and gratitude to the athletes, parents, coaches, and volunteers who work tirelessly to enrich the lives of our youth through athletics and mentorship. This the twenty-second day of August, 2017. If you may join me in recognizing their accomplishment. Again, I shared, I had a son who participated in this program and was just really blown away by the level of commitment of the people who are up here and some who couldn't be with us today. So with that, I'd like to turn the mic over to some of our coaches. If you could talk a little bit about the Police Athletic League. The one coach who knows I'm going to call on him is not even looking at me. So I'm going to handily pass him the mic so he could talk about his role of coaching this athletic league. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Chief Register. I'd also like to recognize a couple of our midnight basketball coaches, Sheldon Long and Avra Duto. We also have a... I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we also have a soccer program and a baseball program, who's now, I believe, at the Braves game, with, I believe, thirty-seven of our participants. We also have a football program that we host at camp every year. All I can say is, we wouldn't be here without the support of the commission, command staff, without these kids. We will work, we will give them everything we have because they give them everything they have. They give us everything they have. That's about it.
Thank you very much. And thank you for giving all that you have. You truly have been a strong role model for these kids. If you can bear with me, because they've done so good all season and took time to be here today, I'd like for them just to share their name and their age and what school you go to. Can you do that for me? What's your name and age?
Jayla and six.
Six? What school you go to, Jayla?
Middleton Elementary.
My name is John. I am seven. Middleton Elementary.
My name is Noah. I go four, and I go to Free King.
I am Kalea, and I go to South Cobb High School.
I'm Kramaya Lee, and I go to South Cobb High School.
I'm Jada, and I go to the Christian Academy.
I'm Devon Clark. I go to Campbell Middle School.
I'm Brad Strachan, and I go to Kennesaw Charter.
My name is Jackson. Seven. Campbell Elementary School.
My name is Sky, and I'm six years old, and I go to the International Academy of Smana.
My name is Joelle, and I go to Russell Elementary School.
Let me introduce my coaches, if you would. Eric Lee, he helped us out with the high schoolers. There is Carlos Simpson, who is the heartbeat of this program. He's our head coach. Nicole Knight, she helped us out this year with the four through sixes, I'm sorry, four through eights. Shanice McDonald, she's right there. She helped us out. And Erica Buckman. I cannot forget Alicia Hicks, who, if Carlos is the heart and soul, she is the brains of the outfit. Without her, we could not. She is an integral part of the program. I cannot forget Captain Hamilton. He's recently with us, but he has given us all the support. He brought all support to bear. Shandra Southern could not be here today. If he's the heart, she's the brain, she's the soul. And I had to make sure I mentioned her. And I cannot forget the one coach who has not said she was a coach, but Commissioner Cupid, who, in the role of mom, one day at a track meet, simply stepped up and took charge, and she has been a coach ever since. So, no problem, ma'am. But once again, I do appreciate you all for having us. Thank you to the parents. You want to say something, sir? I'm sorry, because I know I would not hear the end of it. We got to mention another midnight basketball coaches is Angela Thorne and Michael Dietrich. Without these coaches, we had the eight-week program, and their dedication, for eight weeks, every Friday and Saturday night, from 8:00 PM to midnight, they were out there with these kids. So I had to make mention of them. And I also want to give a special shout-out to Amanda Rain Strong. She was going to start off as one of our coaches, but unfortunately, she found out that she had a brain tumor. And, but I would like to say, as of today, she's doing really well. Her surgeries went well, and she is going to definitely make it. So let's say a prayer for her and her family.
All right, we're good? All right, thank you so much for being out here. Now, we're going to try to come together as close as possible so we can get a good photo op. And then for some of the parents who want to take a picture, you guys can do that following this picture.
And now we have Commissioner Burl, who will make a presentation of certificates.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have the Lassiter Men's Lacrosse Team, state champs up here, and the coaches? Wow. Well, tonight I have the honor of recognizing the Men's Lacrosse Team from Lassiter High School, and this is their first Class 6A/7A championship since 2006. And it's kind of special because their record this year was nineteen and four, and they halted a thirty-nine-game winning streak by Lambert, twenty-two, against in-state opponents. And this was their revenge from last year's state championship, their loss to Lambert. So, good job. Also, Coach Adam Bruckman, who's with us tonight. Near Gunnar. He's not? Oh, I'm sorry. And Coach Chuck Goddard, who is here tonight, were also named the Marietta Daily Journal Coaches of the Year. Bruckman coached the team last season and led Lassiter to a runner-up finish in the Class 6A State Tournament. And this was Coach Goddard's first season with the Trojans and his first time coaching lacrosse. So, very much, a lot of talent here from the coaches and the players. So I'm going to read just one of the certificates, and then we'll hand them out and let the coaches... And we also have Principal Chris Ritchie with us tonight from Lassiter. Thank you. Okay, this is a certificate of achievement presented to Colson Smith, Lassiter High School. Come on over here, Colson. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and the Lassiter High School Lacrosse Team on winning the Class 6A/7A State Championship. With this victory, Lassiter finished the season nineteen and four and reached the team's goal of winning a title after four previous appearances in state finals. Lassiter held the lead the entire championship game, ending its opponent's thirty-nine-game winning streak. We're proud of your team's commitment to excellence and wish you the best as you continue your academic and athletic career. This the twenty-second day of August, 2017. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for the job they do and the service. Also, special thanks to Ms. Burl for inviting us here tonight. I'm Chris Ritchie. I'm principal of Lassiter, and I can't tell you what an honor it is to be here and represent these outstanding men for what they accomplished in the season that they had. And one thing I always want to emphasize with them is they are great athletes, they do an outstanding job on the field, but they're also exceptional students. So they do a great job both in the classroom and on the field, and they truly represent what's right with high school athletics as well as high school academics. So it's an honor to be here with you tonight. We also have Coach Goddard, and I want to make sure and recognize Scott Kelly. He's our athletic director down on the other end down there. And I know Coach Goddard would love to say a few words. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. Once again, this is just an awesome experience. You know, at first, when I walked in here, it kind of hit me, this is really a big deal, and I'm glad these young men were able to be here. You know, this occurred, obviously, in the spring of the year, so we had quite a few seniors who have graduated and gone on to college. So that's one of the reasons why we don't have our seniors here tonight. It was a great experience. It was a... I enjoyed, I've coached football for twenty-eight years. I came, helped with lacrosse, and had a great experience with these young men. Winning a state championship was just such a great feeling, but it was even better feeling watching this group of young men come together as a team. And at one point in time, we were ten and four, and we kind of had to get going, and they buckled down. We won the next nine games, obviously, including the state championship. They played with such great emotion and intensity, and it was just really a joy to be there. We've got a great group of coaches right here that are here. Like I said, a fine group of young men that are here. And I definitely want to thank Dr. Ritchie and Coach Kelly for giving me this opportunity. And Ms. Burl, I appreciate everything that y'all have done in the sport, and just really want to say thank you.
I'm Morgan Lilly.
I'm Zane Zacharias.
I'm Colson Smith.
I'm Colvin Prosser.
Choice Mossteller.
I'm Casey Perry.
Murphy Mossteller.
Dominic MacJack.
Dylan Gross.
My name is Stephen Welch.
Alex Crawford.
Those are the coaches, by the way. They look a little bit old if you thought that they were playing for us. They are the three of the guys that are here. And like I said, Coach Bruckman, one of the other RC coaches, was not able to be here tonight. But once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach, and Principal Ritchie and Scott, for all you do for all of our schools, but these two especially for Lassiter. We are honored to have you here tonight and wish you the best, and go for another championship next year, and we'll be right back here. Thank you. Thank you.
Going on to tab number 12 now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's my pleasure this evening to, on behalf of the Chairman, present a recommendation to the Board for an appointment, a permanent appointment, to our Property Management Director position. Mr. Scott Barfield has worked in various capacities for the county for 26 years, and has done a very, very commendable job in any assignment that he has undertaken. I have noticed, just watching Scott in the last couple of months, since his appointment as interim, that I think the, the best compliment I could pay to Scott, and I believe that any of his coworkers or any of the customers that he served would agree with this. Mr. Chairman, he is a walking-around manager. He is paying attention to what's going on, he's talking to people. To be honest with you, I kinda would like to do a little bit more of that myself, and I would commend Scott for doing it, because he has had all kinds of projects thrown at him, and I think he has stepped up to the challenge. A very well-deserved appointment, and I'm pleased to present Scott for your approval as a permanent Property Management Director.
Mr. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make that motion, I just want to say Scott's done a tremendous job. He kinda graciously stepped up when his predecessor retired, and said he would do it as an interim basis. You know what happens when you say that? We have you, and we are happy that we have you. And as Rob said, you've done a tremendous job, and, and believes in teamwork among his folks that work for him. And so, with pleasure and honor, I am making a motion to appoint Scott Barfield as the Permanent Property Management Director.
You have a second? You have a second? Any discussion? Call to question? And it passes 5 to 0. Scott, if you could come up with your family, please? And what, Scott, could you bring your family up with you, too? All right? Congratulations? That's all yours.
Oh, good grief. Well, I do appreciate, there are a lot of people in here that really have supported me along these 26 years I've been here, and I do appreciate it. The main people have always supported my family, of course. And you have my, uh, wife. My beautiful bride of 36 years. You have my oldest son, Johnny, his wife, Kristen, and of course, wonderful granddaddy, Riley Ray. You have my other son, Christopher, his wife, Amelia. You got Weston here, wild man. And Paisley, where are you at, Paisley? Oh, here's Paisley. And then we got Red, hey, Red. And then, of course, here my older brother came, it's Sam Barfield and his wife, Barbara. So, again, thank y'all, and I do appreciate, I appreciate your vote of confidence, Commissioners and Chairman, Rob, especially Eddie, as well. He's, he's done a lot for me, and, and is coaching me along the way. So, thanks again, and I'll do my best to make sure those lights turn on when you go in your offices tomorrow. Thanks again.
Okay, again, congratulations, Scott. And now we'll move on to tab four, and Dana, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to present for the final public hearing on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As a bit of background, this plan process started about two years ago, and through the process, we have had a lot of opportunities to speak with the public, we developed the framework, a number of public events occurred around this plan, which we'll get into more specifics about, lots of data gathering analysis, talking to the public about kinda where they see Cobb County growing over the next 10, 20, 30 years. And we're happy to keep, continue to receive public comments, as we will do today with our public hearing, which will then end with final edits and reviews of the document prior to submission for regional review. Speaking of community involvement, there has been a substantial amount of effort in order to get the community involved in this planning process in different ways, and try to get their opinions and views about where we are and where we're going as a community as it relates to infrastructure and development in our county. We are a county of many different faces. We have, we have areas that are very rural, we have areas that are more urban, we have wonderful suburban areas, we have areas that are doing incredibly well, we have areas that need a little bit of assistance. And all of these come together to form a distinct vision about who we are as a community and where we're going. And understanding that it's not a one-size-fits-all effort, and you have to incorporate lots of ideas from lots of people in the community in order to bring it together for a complete and accurate vision. So we're happy with the community involvement that we've done, and we think we've done a fantastic job of trying to getting their input and bringing it all together. There's two main components for the overall plan document, and the first is the Plan, 2040 Plan Development. That was the guidebook, that was the rulebook, that was how we're gonna go about putting together and getting through this two-year process. In addition to that, is the overall 2040 Comprehensive Plan itself. And to kinda go, I'm not gonna go through each and every one of these, but the, the community profile is your data document, that kinda shows statistically where we are right now, and what the projections are going to be in the future. The Community Engagement Plan is how we're gonna interact with the public, and the rest of the documents really deal with some of the requirements as it relates to the Department of Community Affairs, and how we are in compliance with that, and how the vision is established for our community. As we get into a little bit of the meat of it, there are three main elements of the overall Comprehensive Plan. The first one is the core elements, where, which is the basic requirements established by the Department of Community Affairs. That includes needs of opportunities, goals, and of course, our overall work program, which is a five-year layout of kinda where we are going in the future. There are three required elements that we must do, and that is in relation to different scenarios. So we have zoning in Cobb County, therefore we need a land use plan. We are part of a, a metropolitan planning organization for transportation, therefore we have to have a transportation plan. We are a HUD entitlement community, therefore we have a housing plan. Everything besides that, and the optional elements, are things that the community, the Board, the Planning Commissioner, others, thought were, were important enough factors for us to consider as part of our overall growth management strategy. And I'm not gonna read all of these over to you, but certainly you can see everything on there, from how we coordinate with others, to how we deal with Dobbin's Air Reserve Base being in the middle of our county. So this, I would ask, at the end of this presentation, Mr. Chairman, if you'd please open the fourth public hearing as it relates to this overall effort. After the completion of today's public hearing, staff by Friday will release the second draft of the Comprehensive Plan Document, the 2040 Plan Document. We will come back to you on September 12th for two key votes. One of them will be to authorize our submission to the Atlanta Regional Commission to start our 40-day review, as required by Department of Community Affairs Rules and Regulations. And the second will be to authorize the extension of our service delivery strategy with the six cities of Cobb County. That's a requirement that we have to do in order to maintain our status. We did just a few years ago approve a 10-year commitment towards that. This is just saying, yes, we're still on board with that 10-year commitment, and we won't actually renegotiate that until the end of that particular governmental agreement. If all of that happens on September 12th, then on October 31st, we will meet our requirement as far as maintaining our qualified local government status. And after October 31st, once we receive comments back from A.R.C., if there are any substantive comments, we'll talk to the Board about your opinions on these individually, and then we will release the final draft of the Comprehensive Plan, and at a date after that, we will ask the Board of Commissioners to consider adoption of the overall plan document. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you to please open up the fourth public hearing as it relates to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, sir.
Okay, before I do that, I'd just like to give the, you know, the voters and the people here in the audience, and also at home, watching online, what are the importance, what's the importance of this plan for the big picture?
The Comprehensive Plan is the overall growth management strategy of the county. So what it does is, it helps the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners to understand policy of how we're growing. And in addition to that, it helps the private sector and property owners know what options you have with your particular property. That's from the kinda the land use perspective. In addition to that, it coordinates transportation and public safety and other types of resources, whether it be social or public services, and it combines them together to look at how, what is our overall strategy for how we are growing and meeting the needs of the community.
Is it also, is it tied into the, to, to the national level at any, any means of the A.R.C.?
Certainly, they review it, because the Department of Community Affairs has outsourced their review to each of the regional development centers, but they don't dictate to us what is in our Comprehensive Plan document. They only review it to ensure that we have complied with the state rules. Certainly, you know, we, we don't work in a vacuum. Certainly, we, we look at what other people are doing as it relates to ensuring that, say, transportation infrastructure doesn't end at Cobb County's line. We want to make sure that our transportation infrastructure is being looked at with Bartow and Cherokee and others, so we see how the overall systems integrate together. Because if we looked at, especially for some issues like transportation, if we looked at our growth alone by ourselves, we would end up with inadequate infrastructure.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, with that, I just want to remind everybody, each speaker has three minutes. There are no limits on the number of speakers we can have. So with that, I would like to now declare this public hearing open on the comments on the 2040 Cobb County Comprehensive Plan. Do we have anybody tonight that'd like to make some comments about the plan? Oh, hey. All right, if there's anybody else besides Ms. Barton, just go ahead and sit down, and then the usual rules, I'll just call you up, it won't cut into your three minutes. I just think it's important that if you, instead of standing, you won't be blocking somebody behind you, so they can't see the person making the comments or what's prepped on the board, okay? So if you just go ahead and just take, take your seat, relax, I'll get to you, I promise. There's plenty of seats out there.
Good evening, my name is Jen Barton, I live in East Cobb. As we have pointed out in numerous presentations, the 2040 is not designed by the taxpayers of Cobb County. It is designed by moneyed special interests that do not have our best interest in mind, even though staff has gotten comments from some of us, that is not the main design. It is a cookie cutter, cut-and-paste plan, making every community the same ugly design throughout the region. Next, please. Contrary to what the Chamber, Development Authority, developers themselves, and other special interests tell you, there is and should be a limit to development. Resources such as water, land, roads, and infrastructure are limited. The Commissioners should call a halt to intense development. Next, please. This slide lists just a few examples of objectionable language in the 2040 Plan. Inappropriate mixed use and intense development permeates the entire document. Next, please. Driving the plan, this is a list of grants available from the Development Authority Program Qualified Local Government Status. All grants account for only roughly 2% of the budget in terms of revenue, but much more than that in expenses going forward. We should reject such granted programs that are not in the best interest of Cobb citizens. Next, please. We have major concerns in the new budget, because they're all intermixed here, that there is no indication that the county has changed its ways in terms of overspending. Like all of us, the county should not spend more than they make, but the new budget continues the spending spree and increases costs by yet another almost 6% in the general fund. The county should do the basic needs, not the wants. Next, please. Cobb employee costs are excessive. Once again, although we have wonderful employees in the county, the county is adding more new non-necessity positions, while employee costs are already over 70% of the budget. The county should implement a hiring freeze, except for public safety, which is still understaffed. The new budget increases employee costs another 5.24%. Next, please. It's time to make good business decisions. With billions in assets, the county needs to sell underutilized costly properties to bring in a revenue stream, instead of asking for tax increases and eliminating services to taxpayers, such as the popular East Cobb Library that has been mentioned recently in the M.D.J. Next, please. It is time to run the county like a business, live within its means like the rest of us have to do. These are just a few of the recommendations that we, the people, are requesting of the county. Final slide, please. So we're asking, please represent us, not special interests.
Just want to remind everyone that this is about the 2040 Plan. So if you're here to discuss something other than the 2040 Plan, then there's another opportunity to do that, okay? This public hearing is about the 2040 Plan. Okay?
I would like to speak about the proposal for closing the East Cobb Library.
No, this is not the right forum for that, ma'am, I'm sorry. The time to do that is at the 12 openings. Ma'am, if you just come over here to the Board and sign up there?
I can.
Okay, it's all right, so, but we'll, we'll get to you, but this is just a public hearing on the 2040 Plan. Is there anyone else that'd like to discuss on 2040 Plan comment? I'll get to you in a second, Ron was up first. Joey?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Ron Siphon. The 2040 Plan, the draft that you have, obviously, there are gonna be some tweaks to it, that'll come out within a week. I don't think there will be any major overhauls. I guess what I want to put on your radar screen is, we have cities, we have regional activity centers where intense development is going to occur in the future. I would have liked to have seen the Comprehensive Plan take better steps toward maintaining the character of the communities that we have outside of the cities and the regional activity centers, maybe one or two other places where we want intense development, for whatever reason, but for the most part, I think we, we need to improve our focus on maintaining the character of the communities that we have. The other thing is, we're gonna have considerable growth, no matter what our policies are, but I think that one of the areas that really hasn't done a good enough job in this plan, and does need improvement in the future, is we have a limited water supply, and as I've discussed on numerous occasions in the past, I think that our current stormwater policies for managing stormwater have become obsolete over the years and decades. I think our current property-specific approach to stormwater control has proven to be inadequate relative to the cumulative effect of all the development that we've had and will continue to have over the next few years, and that we need, as part of the Comprehensive Plan, to begin the process of developing a more robust approach to stormwater management.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cupid, other distinguished members of the Commission, I'm Joel Cope, and I'm actually appearing tonight in my own personal capacity, as opposed to maybe my other status, I may appear before this august body. But we want to speak in support of the comp plan that's been advocated here tonight. We have found in our dealings on this comp plan, as well as other work that we've done with community development, they've been very thoughtful in their approach they've taken to our area, as you know. Many people think Mapleton's a city, but actually, Mapleton's not, it's actually part of unincorporated Cobb, and we've found that they're very thoughtful in their development, working with us. in their development, working with us, because there were some specific proposals they've come up with here, as well as elsewhere, where they've had these design codes and other things, which have been taking into consideration the needs of our community, our specific part of the community, as well as just a larger commercial interest. And so we want to indicate, or at least I would indicate anyway, speaking for myself, that I think they've done a good job, and I think that they don't need to be taking any parts of the code or the plan that would speak to kind of the more specific development proposals in our area of the county. I think that they have done a very good job here, and they've been working hard, trying to develop these proposals, and I appreciate your support for them, so thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment on the 2040 plan? Seen none, I now close this public, I now call, declare this public hearing closed. And we'll move on to tab number five.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm here today to give a brief presentation on the proposed 2018 budget and ask you to open our first public hearing regarding the 2018 proposed budget. Briefly, here we go, I just want to go over our schedule. We advertised in the M D J on August 15th, we presented the budget, and this is going to be our first public hearing tonight. We are going to have a second advertisement in the M D J on September 5th, conduct our second public hearing on September 12th, that is our morning meeting, and then also ask the board to consider adopting the proposed 2018 budget at that morning meeting. Okay, so just want to run through a few, a little bit of history here, sort of millage rates and digest growth. The digest, the millage rates that we list for the proposed 2018 budget are the ones that the board adopted this past July for 2017, so if you look at the columns for 2017 and 2018, you'll see that those are identical. And I also want to remind the board that the 2018 proposed budget does include a digest growth in this. This is 4.45% over 2017's growth. So those are already factored into the budget numbers that you will see here shortly. Okay, and as a part of the process, we also disclose any full-time positions that we're asking for the authority to create. In this case, we are asking for fire positions to be created, and again, these are funded out of the fire fund, no general fund dollars go to this fund, and you can see the positions listed here, and then we do also have a few, well, six positions that are being reclassed in the fire fund as well. Okay, and this is our first slide on the general fund, and if you remember, our proposed 2018 budget numbers that we had up there was slightly higher. Per the chairman's direction, we did pull out the Sewell Mill positions and operating costs to be considered at a later date as a separate item, so that's why you see that number as a slight, slight change. But I do want to remind the board that in the 2018 proposed budget, we are using one-time monies, and again, this is where you see the slight change. The previous presentation, it was 21-plus million that we were using, because we pulled out those items, it dropped to $20.7 million, and the breakout is below, 10.4 for the paying class implementation, 5.7 for the title ad valorem, and this is the lost revenue that we've seen as, in relation to this revenue source, and then we are going to be using 4.6 million from the economic contingency to balance this budget. Okay, this is the general fund revenue slide, I want to call to the board's attention that if you remove the fund balance number under the 2018 proposed budget, the difference between the 2017 adopted number and what we're proposing is $179,000 out of $383 million. So that is the change in revenues of actual dollars that we will be bringing in. And so, in order to balance the budget, we did have to, we did have to use $20.7 million of one-time monies to go through this process. And moving on to the expenditure side of the house, you can see them broken out in major categories here. The biggest change is obviously in personnel services, this is due to paying class, also the 2017 merit that was proposed, or that was passed, and the full year cost of that merit is reflected here, but one of the keys I want to point out is on the operating side of the house, you'll look, that's actually a slight decrease. We're not adding any new services here, this is a slight decrease of where we were last year. The capital that we have, and you can see there was none in 2017, we do have a slight increase in the proposed 2018. This is part of a B O C-approved agenda item that happened earlier in the year for water pipe replacement. The debt service, debt service, you'll notice, is a significant increase, and I actually have a slide in a few minutes that I'll discuss that, but that is related to the stadium bonds that we have outstanding. And then, as we move down, we have the transfers in and out, and then I have a contingency slide following up that, I believe on my next slide, that'll discuss the 6.4 million that we have in contingency. The key point with this contingency is, these are monies that we adopt in the budget, and then we move into departments' budgets as, as needed, for a very specific purpose, but I'll walk through those here in a second. Okay, so we talked about the contingencies. The proposed 2018 has 6.4 million of contingencies. The major source of that is personnel contingencies, and those are things that are board-approved positions that we created during the year that have not been filled yet. For example, one of the items we talked about tonight, I know the medical examiner position was pulled from the agenda, that is in there, so the funding is available if the board determines to move forward, if and when the board determines to move forward with that. We have public safety shift differential in education pay, there's a proposed 1% cost of living increase, but I do want to remind the board, this is for personnel that did not receive an impact from the paying class study only. We also have the $1 million for the board of commissioners' undesignated contingency. This is funds that allows the board to make decisions during the year and provide you a funding source. So if we had a major piece of equipment breakdown during the year, the board would bring back, or the department could bring back the agenda item to ask for funds available to make that replacement happen, and the board could authorize it to be used out of this money. But this is, again, unforeseen funds that we would, that we typically use a little bit each and every year, and it just depends on the severity of the situation. And then we have our standard contingencies that we set aside. We have storm debris cleanup, death penalty, sister city contingencies, these are only used in those cases, they can only be used for a death penalty case, storm debris, and so on. Then we have our first of three remaining payments to the Braves relating to the infrastructure. We, as you remember, we had a $14 million commitment to the Braves, and we had $490,000 and change outstanding, and then we committed during that agenda item to pay that $490,000 over the next three years. This was the first payment of the $490,000. And then the last line, for $102,000, that's a B O C-approved increase to the Atlanta Regional Commission Local Match, this was an item that was approved earlier by the board and has an 18 impact. So that rounds out our contingencies, and I'm going to go back one slide briefly, and I just want to call to your attention, in the 2017, we had $9.8 million of contingencies. The significant drop in contingencies is because in 2017, we had a 3% merit in there, and that has decreased down to a 1% cost of living increase. So that's the major change in the contingencies. Okay. And then, I told you I would discuss the stadium bond debt, you can see the $22.4 million that we will be paying in 2018, these are the funding sources. We will be receiving $6.1 million from the Braves, we will be receiving $2.5 million from the Cumberland Special Service District 1, this is the $3 room night fees that the hotels pay in. We will also receive $5.15 million from the Cumberland Special Service District 2, this is commercial properties within the district that pay into property tax to help fund this debt service. And then we also have $1.7 million from the hotel motel taxes that we collect, this is excesses that come, that are designated specifically for the stadium purpose, or that we have designated for the stadium purpose. And then we have rental car tax, which is paid typically by tourists who come into the area, so that rounds out $16 million of the $22 million that are paid from funds that are not related to general fund property taxes. The last line that you see there is general fund property taxes, $6.4 million. That is in relation to the millage shift that we discussed and proposed earlier this year. The general fund has to generate $6.4 million to cover those costs. With that being said, as additional revenues come in, we perform better in any of those categories above, that lessens the burden on the general fund. So we will, we will provide an update each, each and every year as to how that, how those revenues are trending, and provide that to the board and as, for your consideration of how to best use those funds, which would obviously be towards, towards the stadium bond debt service. But at least we'll, we'll come back and make sure you're fully aware of how those numbers are trending. Okay. All right, and then moving on, these are our operating funds, we've already discussed the general fund briefly, we have all the other governmental operating funds listed here. Per the board's direction, we have included any funds with an asterisk that have fund balance appropriation, meaning one-time monies to help balance the budget, as well as a pound sign for any funds that are subsidized by the general fund. So going down the list, general fund we talked about is using $20 million of one-time funds, and then you'll move down the list, you'll see that debt service is using one-time funds. This is monies that we've collected already that are going to be used to pay off pre-existing bonds. And we do have two bonds outstanding right now, we have our 28, our 2008 parks bonds, which was our private placement for the Bullard property purchase, as well as the 2017 parks bonds that we just passed earlier this year. So January 1, we will make our final payment on the Bullard property, and that bond will be gone, and then we will just have the 2017 parks bonds remaining. E-901 fund, we are using some fund balance, it's a slight amount, about $290,000 in 2018. The reason we are doing this is because we're still waiting to see how the fees come in in relation to the fee change that was proposed earlier, or passed earlier this year, going to $1.50. We only have one quarter of data on those fees, and we want to see a little bit more data, but as those revenues come in, the idea is not to have to use any of those, and we'll be relying on the reoccurring revenues that this fund generates. This is a self-sustaining fund. And then we move down to the parking deck, this is one of the funds that is subsidized by the general fund. We have a $300-plus thousand transfer that comes from the general fund into the parking deck to help sustain those operations. The next fund that receives, or that we have fund balance appropriation for is our Cumberland Special Service District 1, again, the $3 hotel motel, or $3 room night fees that we collect through the hotel motels. The $6.7 million that you see in 2017, this was monies that we collected in previous years. The 2018 proposed is the $3.6 million that we project as an ongoing reoccurring revenue source. So in 2017, we used the previous monies that we collected, and then going forward, we'll be using $3.6 million or something less than that, because we can look at, again, those monies, any additional monies there would have to be used in the district to support those services within the district. With that being said, the total increase for the governmental fund types is up 3.76% over prior years. And then we're going to move on to our business-type funds, our golf course fund, which is our cobblestone operations, as well as our Fox Creek and Legacy, mainly cobblestone operations, we just received some revenues from Fox Creek and Legacy, but that is a flat budget, solid waste. Again, this is one of the funds that receives general fund subsidy, this is for post-closure care on landfills that are closed. We are required by law to maintain those landfills, and because we've privatized the solid waste operations, we receive very little revenue, we do receive some, but as we, as we know with any post-closure care, it could be next to nothing for one year, and then a dramatic amount the following year. So it's only spent based on the needs that are arising to maintain that post-closure, those post-closure expenses regarding the landfills. The transit fund also receives general fund subsidy, we've talked about this in the past, we, the transit fund's actually receiving $12 million directly from the general fund to the transit fund, and then we have an additional $4.6 million that is going to help for local matches and related to the transit fund. That goes into our 380 fund, and then is moved out of the 380 fund to help fund that local match requirement. Okay, the water fund is also going to be using fund balance appropriations this year, again, no fee increase proposed at this time for the water fund, and this is to help them maintain the water operations within, within the county. Okay, and our capital projects funds, this is our stadium capital maintenance fund, we, this does receive a transfer from the general fund. You see the budget proposed for 2018 is $2.46 million, exactly half of that. $1,230,000 comes from the general fund as part of the county's requirement to fund the ongoing capital maintenance for the stadium. The additional $1.23 million comes into this fund from the Braves, and both the county's money and the Braves' money is held in trust until the board, the gallery authority, and the Braves all agree that, that that money can be spent on a capital maintenance, a capital maintenance expense. Our capital projects funds, this is where we collect to do large capital projects that are non-sploss funded, so any, any department or fund that is going to be the beneficiary of that project transfers monies into this fund, and those projects are completed in this fund. The reason we put them in there, because a lot of these projects are multiple, take multiple years, and we don't want to have to try to maintain those within the individual funds itself. The water REI fund, I know Commissioner Cupid, you asked about this in our, at our last presentation, so I want to make sure I get this exactly correct here. We worked with water this past week to try to get you a good answer on this. We had some large increases in 2017 regarding the water REI fund, and that was large capital improvements to the South Cobb and Northwest Treatment Plants, so the actual, the 2018 brings the budget back down similar to where we were in 2016. We just saw some peaks in 2017 due to some capital projects. And then, the water system development fees has a slight increase, and that is due to infiltration system project at the Sutton Treatment Plant in 2018. So this is where they conduct, out of these two funds, where they conduct their large capital projects, sewer replacements, treatment plants, and things of that nature. So these are very, these are subject based, based on what the needs and what the projects are out there currently. Okay, and with that, sir, I'll turn it over to you for any questions or comments before we open the public hearing.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Sure, just one question, Bill, I know we've talked many times.
Yes, sir.
On the capital slide, you mentioned a money that was set aside for water pipe replacement. Please, I thought that came out of the water fund, maybe I'm confused.
No, sir, that is on the general fund side, this is in relation to, sorry, I went too far, apologize. This is the $416,923 for capital, this is regarding water pipe replacement at the detention center. So this was part of the sheriff's item that we brought back that is a multi-year project.
That kind of water.
Yes, sir. Yeah, water pipe replacement, but for the detention center, not for the jail.
For the jail.
Yes, sir.
Got it, thank you, ma'am, I was confused, sorry.
And just staying on this slide.
Yes, sir.
The $260 million to $274 million, the $14 million increase for personnel services.
Yes, sir.
$10 million of that is from, is for the pay study, right?
That is correct, sir, 10.4.
And the other remaining is that money from the fire fund to pay for the firemen?
No, sir, this, this does not have any fire personnel in it whatsoever, this is general fund, fire would be in, in this fund here, you'd see fires listed out, and you can see they went from 85 million to 91 million, so this is entire fire fund operations, personnel, operating capital, you name it, that's fire fund. But what you're referring to, sir, is the personnel increase to general fund only, and you are exactly right, we had an increase of 10.4 for paying class, the additional monies was $2 million for merit, the 26, the 2017 merit, and the continuing impact on 2018 and what that's going to do, as well as increases to pension and fringe and things of that nature.
Okay, and then going back to the first slide, we had the tax digest increase of 5.46.
Yes, sir.
That also included the pay study, right? The increase in the tax digest, or is that, is that from assessment increases?
The, this, the total budget, the 5.46, sir?
Right.
That, that is encompassing the entire revenues, as well as entire expenditures, so this does include a 4.45% increase on the digest is factored into this number. The reason that you don't see that equate to the revenues, if you look at the property tax number at this slide here, you see the change is basically 0%. The reason that is 0% is that decrease in, or the increase in property tax revenues that we're going to, we hope to see from the digest growth is completely offset by the loss of title ad valorem revenue.
Okay.
So that, that line remained zero, and then we had to use the title ad valorem to help balance the budget.
All right, so there will be no, there will be no additional income from property taxes next year, but there will be additional income from other sources of revenue?
There, in the, there will be no additional income in the property tax category.
Right.
Which includes the title ad valorem, which kind of wipes out the, yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thank you, Bill. You have some questions. I'm missing one of your slides here in my printed presentation, at the contingency amounts there.
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize for that, that was added late today.
Okay, so I was busy, busy looking for the slide in my packet.
I do apologize for that, we, that was, that was some direction we received today, and we want to make sure we got that.
I asked him to break that out as a separate support slide this afternoon.
Sure.
So I apologize to the board, that was my, I just thought it would be important to people to see where that's, that contingencies came from.
It's no problem, just in the midst of my shuffling, I missed the explanation for the personnel contingency.
No, that was on the, Commissioner, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, and, and what we have with that is, you're going to, these are positions, a lot of these are positions that have been approved by the board. We have, we've talked about the medical examiner position is one, we have comdev positions that were approved last year, that we're waiting to fill those based on the renovation for the facility, things of that nature.
Okay, so these were items approved last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I believe I had an additional question for you, Bill, but I don't see it yet, so I'll defer to any other commissioner that has a question. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrow?
The only question I have is, why is the fire fund listed in here if it's separate, as is the debt service?
The fire fund is listed The fire fund is listed separately because they have their own millage rate and we by law have to break them out.
No, I'm saying why are they in the proposed budget, operating budget, when they're separate, as is the debt service is separate?
Yes, ma'am. All these funds here are, they're individual funds. So we've talked about the general fund is usually where we focus most of our attention, but we do still have to adopt budgets for each and every one of these funds, from the claims fund all the way down to the Six Flags Special Service District. So even though the only fund on this slide that receives general fund dollars would be the parking deck, we still have to have the board authorize us and approve a budget for the remaining funds to, to function. But you, you're exactly correct. Those are, all of these are separate funds and it's just, we, we have, we have to get approved budgets for each and every one.
Okay.
Okay.
And I understand community development has to be in the general fund, but it's self-supporting too.
That, that's correct. The, the, the main reason for these is the revenue sources that we, that we collect in for these, a lot of times, especially for the fire fund, because it has its own millage, by law, we are required to have that as a separate fund. Same as the debt service, we collect a special millage for the debt service, so we do have to show that as a separate fund.
And do we, do we have a, on page four, where you have the 30 positions within fire?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a cost amount associated with that?
Yes, ma'am. It's approximately $2.9 million.
I think we should add that cost.
It's in the fire fund line, it's in the fire fund line.
I don't know, but it's still going to, should show what this is equivalent to.
Okay, we can put that number on there. We'll just modify the slide to reflect the total.
Understood.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome, ma'am.
No, I don't have any questions. I met with Bill and Buddy this afternoon and we talked about all this then.
All right. Great presentation. Sure, Commissioner Cupid?
Okay, on the general fund contingency slide that was added today.
Yes, ma'am.
The 1% cost of living increase, that's, that's being proposed for this year.
That is correct.
Okay, and that's being proposed in lieu of merit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that will cover all employees, full-time and part-time?
That will cover all employees that did not receive an impact from the paying class study.
So any part-time people too?
I believe so, but I will confer, I will check with Tony just to make sure that it does, but I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Tony's back there?
Rob's nodding along with me. I think we're, we're both on the same page here.
Okay, so help me understand that then. If it includes just the employees that didn't receive the paying class study increase, I thought part of that approach was to better ensure equity amongst all employees. So now we are, again, looking at something that is not based on the assessment of that data and it looks like we could be increasing that disparity by blankly providing a 1% increase to those that didn't receive it. I, I just don't see how this helps to accomplish the goal behind the paying class study.
Understood.
Well, that, and I can answer that one. There was no intent, actually, you're right, it won't increase any equity there, but the bottom line is because of the millage rate, we would not be able to implement the merit raise like we did in the past years because we didn't have the funds to cover it. So my thought pattern was better something than nothing, so, because I didn't want to get into a food fight over who's going to get, who's going to qualify for the merit raise. We'd have to change our standards based on previous years because it's limited by resources. So what I thought just a general approach would be those that benefited from the pay study, obviously would benefit and those that didn't, a COLA would, would be a, a small solace to, to address against what I thought I was going to try to achieve later in the future, which is to completely get to your equity issue by the pay study. But the, but, but the direction of the board is we're not going to be able to do that because we are in fact limiting our, our millage rate. So in this case here, I just put that in as a proposal. It's not, it's not, it's not ingrained in sand. It's something the board will be discussing over the next, over the next couple of weeks to see if there's a better way to address this. I just want to put something to let the employees know that we are considering all of them, trying to get them some benefit based on, on our, on our current, our current funding. It was never meant to be a, to be an alternative to, to the equity issue that the pay study was going to address.
Yeah, okay.
It was never meant to do that.
And you're, you're actually, by saying that addresses my concern because the paying class study was to help address inequity.
Right.
And so if there's a cost of living adjustment, that equity is further widened by not looking at that inequity amongst all, all levels of pay that the other study took, took opportunity to, to do. And if there's a, everybody's going to be impacted by a cost of living, so not just those that didn't receive it and those that actually received the merit.
Sure.
They had been behind for so long, so it's just like no matter what they do to catch up, that line is always going to be moved forward, that they don't catch up to be paid equitably because of, of something like this.
Sure.
When we do things that to me are not just based on comparing, benchmarking that pay compared to other pay, so that's my concern.
And I, if a legitimate concern is, my whole thought thing was what, what do I, what can I do for all the employees given the resources that I have? Next year, obviously I'll propose a COLA for everybody, but it doesn't address the issue this year, but at least those who benefited from the pay study are going to get, are going to benefit probably in most cases, more significantly than those who get a COLA.
I guess it all depends on how you beho, again, on how you view it, because if they had already been behind, so now you're looking to them as if now you get a benefit for just being brought up to where you should have been.
I get that point.
That's why, that's, I think it's not conveying the best.
Well, it goes to Commissioner Otz's comments earlier in the week that the pay study in itself had some imperfections and we're dealing with the consequences of those. My whole thought process though was that I wanted to send a signal to the employees that we're, given what we have to work with, I thought this was, this was something where everybody, whether they benefit from the pay study or those who are every day doing their job, would at least be recognized for their performance with a, with a COLA.
Does a COLA recognize performance?
No, it doesn't, but it recognizes the fact that they've hung in there and once again, you know, showing their loyalty to this, to this county by staying with us and the least we can do is give them a COLA.
Okay.
This is my thought process.
I hear you, I hear you.
We have, it's just a proposal I put out there. I know I need to get three votes on it, that's okay. Just throw it out there, we'll chew on it and we'll see what happens. We have two more weeks of discussion, if not longer. Okay, with that, any other questions for the board members? Again, remind each.
Can I, can I make a quick comment before you open the public hearing?
Sure.
I would just like to thank Jan Barton and Debbie Fisher for their questions this week and working with budget staff. They took a lot of time to review some documents that we provided them and they had some great questions, so I just wanted to publicly thank them for their time and effort looking into the budget. Sorry, sir.
What about my questions? Were they worth it?
I, I always enjoy your questions, sir. What about mine? Especially yours. Okay.
Thank you, Bill, for your help in putting all this together.
Okay, with that, I just want to remind everybody, each speaker has three minutes. There are no limits on the number of speakers and with that, I do now declare this public hearing open on the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget. And with that, do we have any speakers? And again, I'd like to ask, okay, just one at a time and then the next speaker comes down, the next one get up and I'll make sure that you all have time to speak tonight. So I'd like to make sure, I request also that you let me have your name and where you live, okay?
Sure. Thank the Board of Commissioners for, for giving me this great opportunity to speak, speak up. My name is Shu Zhang and I live in East Cobb. And I'm a mom of two and my son is nine years old, my daughter is seven, and they both go to Mont Bethel Elementary School, which is a public school we loved in the community. And when the news of a proposal for closure of East Cobb Library came to our community last night and everybody I knew in my community were shocked and saddened by the news. And a lot of people I know have worked very hard throughout the day to think of different ways to speak up and their voice, all of their love for the community and which we, we all view the library as a big, very important piece of, of that community. And I have visited the library with the kids many times and every time, remember, I have to drag both of them out of the library because they love their, the library so much. And I know there's also elders who cannot drive very far and they actually can walk to the library and that's a big part of the, of what's that can enrich their retirement life. And I personally use the library computers to access some of the database for my work. And I know people organize storytimes very frequently. And Mont Bethel won, as you know, won the blue ribbon last year, which is, we all very proud of. And the library is the second school after school hours and many of the families walk over there, borrow books for kids for, for family to read. And we, we understand that it's very challenging to balance your budget and we saw people have been working very hard on it, but we don't want to penalize people, especially kids loving for knowledge. And that's our hope for our community, that's a hope for our county and that's a hope for our, our whole country. And I'm sorry for the, the, the flunder through the, the process and this is my first time coming to a public hearing, but I did not see the poker face as imagined. I saw a Board of Commissioner love our community, set up all these great events to help our kids, help the community to grow and, and flourish. And I wish really all of my, bottom of my heart, that hope that, that closure of the library would not happen because people would have to drive minimum 20 minutes to somewhere else and even in non-traffic hours, which will definitely damage, damage the, the, the community that we love. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, the Board of Regents and also ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yali Zell. I'm a professor and also I'm a resident East Cobb as well. So I'm, I'm the education professor at Georgia State University. I'm not representing there, basically I'm writing myself and also my kids and also a lot of people just like me. So I've been living East Cobb many years and I've seen, I mean, I visited the, the East Cobb Lab, Library every week, several times a week. And also for my research and some other purposes, education purposes, I visited a lot other libraries and noticed, I mean, in our library, in the East Cobb Lab, always there are so many people reading books there, not only the young people, but also a lot of senior citizens, right? They spend their best time there, reading books and also it's really, really beneficial for our young people because, I mean, at the schools, we always have the reading campaign and also we're encouraging our kids to read books and to educate themselves. And also, as a professor, I'm really disheartening and sad to see that so many kids today, they're addicted to the electronics and the games and all that. So they really need to spend more time reading and try to educate and try to grow to be a competent, responsible citizens, right? Because they are our hope. But oftentimes we can see, right? It's hard to see that we're going to lose our library. That is a tremendous beneficial kind of resources for all our citizens and residents there. So we strongly, I was very shocked to hear last night about this sad news. So we sincerely, we hope that you can reconsider your proposal and because it's really benefiting so many else, about like a quarter million, I don't know exactly the number, but we know there are so many, it's a very highly populated area and there are so many activities going on, the culture activities and the great stories, activities of young kids and also for all the adults. So we hope that you will, you try your best to keep the library there and to, so we can all benefit and we can all help our kids and also ourselves to be the good citizens as we all want them to be. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Debbie Fisher. And I do appreciate Mr. Volkman giving some recognition, but about now, he's probably wishing that Jan and I would go away. So I'm going to start with, I did notice when going through the budget that there were a couple of things that decreased, so hats off for taking a few things out. One, charitable contributions to 501Cs, gone, congratulations. But I'm not confident it's not buried someplace else. The other thing I noticed that is gone, or gone, reduced, is the drug addiction education and that's a little concerning, considering that Cobb County was second in the whole region for opioid deaths. So I don't know if that's part of the court system or why we reduced it, but that's a little concerning, especially since the use of heroin is on the rise. So I really would like to encourage you to take another look at that. As I was going through the budget and asking a lot of questions, some may have seemed insignificant, but the reason I asked the questions is because it's not really visible. It's about as opaque as it can be on many different levels and one of the most glaring that I'm trying to figure out is the personnel costs. I'm not trying to take away from any county staff because I do say we have five-star county employees. However, 70% of our budget is personnel cost. That is very, very significant. And on top of that, we give 45% of them a raise. And now we give the other 55% a 1% raise, knowing going into 2018, we had a $20 million deficit. And that was predicted in the CAFER in 2016. So shock, no one sitting up there should be shocked that we have a deficit. And handing out trophies to everybody is just not an appropriate time. Speaking of trophies, it looks like in the budget, the BOC was given a trophy. They went from 800 and change to over a million dollars for personnel services. So, and operations. So I'm just curious, considering there's only five of you, each of you have an admin, the equivalent of a full-time admin, where that million dollars is going? It's a small amount, but it's not insignificant.
Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry, your time's up.
That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Slomavitz and I'm an East Cobb and I just wanted to show my support for the East Cobb Library and I think it's kind of beyond the library. I think it's more of the East Cobb Community Center. I was there this morning and there was a mom with a baby having a snack on the outside, there was a child being tutored on the inside, there was people studying in the classrooms at the back. It's the, it's the life and the heart of East Cobb and to lose that would just be a tremendous disservice to the community. So I kind of wanted to know what everyone's thoughts and feelings about East Cobb Library are and what they see is the future for our community center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all the citizens of Cobb County and the Commissioner. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity, for letting us exercise our freedom of speech. And I'm Gwynnivea Reader, Palace Springs, Georgia.
Okay, could you just at least let us know who you are, please?
I just said I'm Gwynnivea Reader, Palace Springs, Georgia.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I am Chair of MAPSC, Mableton, Austin Parish, and Community Consultants, which is a group of volunteer community collaborators. We are a watchdog grant-ready and consulting group. Recently I sent an email blast requesting the Office of Cobb County Vice Chair and South Cobb Area Commissioner Lisa Cupid and your office, Chairman Voice, to investigate the inequities of the Cobb County budget allocated for the CDBG Community Development Block Grant funding process. It has come to our attention that the CDBG grant funds and community foundation funds are always awarded to the same status quo organizations such as the Cobb about the CDBG community and, and the community foundation disparity in grant process and allocation of these funds. There seems to be a need for an investigation as to why the CDBG continues to award these grants to the status quo organizations that should be sustainable, thriving, and maintaining their programs to other funding sources, private, corporate, state, and other federal agencies, especially since these organizations have been receiving these funds for 10, 20, 30 years. Is this presidential preference, implicit bias, political favoritism, or microaggressive behavior to fund only the status quo nonprofits and corporations and organizations, such as the Cobb Collaborative, Cobb Fund Resources, Salvation Army, Musk Ministry? Why doesn't the CDBG office make a concerted effort to award grassroots leaders, advocates, and organizations that are not umbrellaed by the SQOs, the status quo organizations? There is a need for a development-based manual of dos and don'ts for nonprofits and grassroots organizations? And what CDBG funds are best suited for our businesses? Also, there should be two funding sources, one for the status quo organization, but one also for the up-and-coming, new form, emerging fledgling community groups, grassroots nonprofits, with work-in-progress workshops to assist us with the technical process of the grant fundings? As well as, why does the South Cobb grassroots communities disproportionately are left out, unfairly treated, and the equitable distribution of these funds are not given to the South Cobb area? It's funny how the East Cobb communities receive their fair share. And also, um, since money is raining in Cobb County right now for the stadiums, we're finding, uh, finding it interesting that there's no surplus set aside for transportation, affordable housing, as well as educational workforce training for our youth. So thank you again. I'll be back.
I believe I have a office appointment scheduled with you, don't I?
Yeah, we're waiting for an appointment.
Okay, I thought we had one on the calendar already. Still working, okay, all right. Sure.
Uh, let me start by, uh, commenting that I do serve on the Transit Advisory Board. However, tonight I'm speaking just for myself. Um, I, let me also start by saying, I think transit is a necessity in Cobb County. We have, we have citizens who, regardless of their need, they need to, to take transit to get to work and support their family. I, I think that we need to have transit for those of us in Cobb County who need transit. We invest in transportation. It needs to be transportation for everybody. Um, however, with regard to transit, I think that, uh, we also have a responsibility to taxpayers and we want to maintain taxpayer support for transit. And one of the things that undermines taxpayer support is empty buses. So I'm not so sure that the issue of empty buses is somewhat overstated, but let's talk about that a little bit. Um, I'm going to assume that there have to be cuts in all areas of the budget except for public safety. Um, so looking at transit, um, clearly the Cumberland Circulator South Route, or the Red Route, is probably the closest to completely empty buses that we have. And I had urged you all last year not to start that South Route service. The first thing that needs to be cut is that South Route. On the Cumberland Circulator Core Route, there are times of day that the buses are near empty. The, the route certainly needs to be, um, modified. We don't need extensive service when we have almost no riders. Um, I was also, uh, I had also recommended, uh, more than a year ago, that the Cumberland CID, I thought, should be a partner in providing that service. It was, it was provided for the Cumberland CID. I thought they should be a partner in funding it. I thought that they should be a partner in outreach to the businesses in the Cumberland CID, to be sure that, that, um, the businesses were encouraging or, or at least letting their employees know about the service. I'm not sure that that's happened. So cutbacks on the Core Route, especially up until the, we get to a time where there's more of a partnership with the Cumberland CID on this, I think is warranted.
Mr. Seifin, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay, I'll finish it at public comment. Thank you.
I'm Sally Riddle, live in District Four. We know that we're now going to have to live with the millage rate that three of you voted for and the depletion of our county's reserve funds with the passage of this budget. I don't envy you the tasks that you now have ahead of you, though, because now you're going to have to do the hard work of dividing up the big bucket of funds into the apartment buckets and then the line item budgets. And as you make decisions of what no longer gets support, please keep the focus on those services and programs that provide necessary services to those who are less financially secure or in other special needs in our community. Recognize that not all our citizens have internet or computers at home and use our libraries for that access. And that access may need to be off-hours. And thus, if library hours are cut, individuals who have shift work or split shifts, are in retail jobs, who maybe their only day off is Sunday, they're the ones who get hurt. Recognize that citizens cannot get to their jobs or to school without bus services or even to those libraries, and that includes Sundays. Recognize that our senior centers are the primary socialization point for many seniors or the only way they can afford a fitness center to keep them healthy. As I noted at Chairman Boyce's Town Hall meeting in District Four, you cannot have a county that is first-class if you do not support quality services and maintenance of our county facilities, roadways, and parks. And last but not least, supporting our dedicated, hard-working employees, who've already been doing so much in understaffed situations, recognizing that we do have departments like public safety that should be a focus, but all of our departments are service departments. I've heard several people reference the fact that, gee, 70% of our budget is going to personnel. Well, since in this county, unique to any place I've lived, and this is my sixth state, most of our capital funding is under sploshed. And since the purpose of government is to provide services, it's no surprise to me that 70% of the budget, as with most service agencies that I've dealt with, sometimes it's even higher, would be personnel costs. And yet, without those personnel and quality personnel, we can't do our job. If you end up underpaying people or end up with the threat of layoffs, having been a manager in many positions in the past, the employees you're going to lose first are your best qualified employees who can easily go elsewhere. The employees you will be left with are those who are less qualified or feel that the only safe place for them to be is to stay. And that's not a desirable situation either. We have a situation where the can has been kicked down the road due to deciding to decrease the millage rate. And again, I don't envy you the decisions that you have to make, but please, as you move forward, recognize our focus needs to be on those who need our services most. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, Commissioners, my name is Joel Cope and I live in Mableton and I rise again this evening to speak on my own individual behalf, not on behalf of any organization that I serve with. Um, I, I think that it's very safe to say that, as the previous speaker mentioned, it's a very tough challenge you have in front of you. And I remember specifically what Chairman Boyce said in one of our meetings when he was talking about the budget and the millage rate discussion, you know, if you want me to support one thing, what am I going to cut over here? Um, I don't rise necessarily to identify cuts and don't have access to the budget materials that, that, you do. However, I would say as a general principle, there are several things I think we need to consider as principles when we go through and look at the budget expenses. Certainly, public safety is critical. Uh, there are some very specific needs I know that I've had identified to me, such as the need for a fingerprint expert. There's also issues with take-home cars, cameras, and other supports that you can render to people who provide public safety every day and put their life on the line. I think that's certainly very critical. However, there's other services that you can't reduce to easy numbers. There are things like parks where people go and play. They go jog, they go bike. Those are quality of life issues. You cannot put a price tag on. Uh, people have fought hard to get park space and those park spaces don't grow, they typically shrink. Uh, as well, you've heard support for libraries and supporting literacy. Again, many people don't have access to the internet, as the previous speaker mentioned. They don't have another resource. It's, it's very difficult to have, that people tend to have support for internet access in a society where we're built increasingly on access to the internet. Another thing, of course, is important for us to support are transit, as another speaker mentioned. Transit is, is more than just simply dollars and cents. For some people, it's literally their way to get to school, their way to get a job. That's economic development. And it's not always easy to serve, to decide decisions on bus routes strictly by numbers because sometimes it's a matter of what people can't afford to do and what they can afford to do. And if we want to support job creation, we've got to support ability that people get from their houses to their jobs. Otherwise, those jobs go away and go unfilled. These are all very important considerations. And I would also say that we've been very fortunate in this county that we have some very dedicated staff for the people who help do your tags, when you pay every, every year, to the folks who deal with voter registration and the libraries and on up. I don't know how the best to decide how you allocate monies between one group of employees versus another, but I will say it's been my personal experience that we've been very fortunate to have some very dedicated public servants, whether they're ones that we know by name or the ones that we encounter in our daily experience in our government centers. These are people who work very hard and oftentimes without much accolade. And certainly, they're not doing this job because they get rich. They're doing it because they care about the public and they provide a service. And I think it's only right and only fair that we provide them with the appropriate compensation in order to make that happen, because they have done without in the past in terms of pay raises and things of that nature. And one does have to recognize those facts if we consider our budget. So again, I don't have suggestions for specific areas of budget to cut. However, I would say there's some specific areas that we definitely want to support. Uh, one of our mask, our logos, I guess, has in the past have been "Expect the Best." And I think we can't expect that if we don't provide the necessary resources for that. The people who provide those things are the people that we see and we deal with every day.
Sorry, your time's up.
Thank you very much and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Pax Riddle, District Four. Uh, I just wanted to speak about the last meeting, uh, where we had the shock that the millage was not going to pass. What you have to remember is that a great number of Cobb County citizens who were either, uh, ready to accept a millage increase because that's the way things go, nothing goes down, or those who were adamantly pro the millage increase didn't, were not at that meeting, primarily because the newspaper told us that the vote was going to be 3-2. So it was a shock when one of the Commissioners suddenly changed their vote. I really expected more from our county leaders, who generally give us excellent leadership and management of this county. Those of us who attended the, the Town Hall meetings, the Chairman Boyce ran, uh, it was very obvious from the, uh, the excellent presentations, and it was all laid out, exactly what, what our current financial situation is and why the millage increase was required. Uh, I attended the one in, uh, Commissioner Weatherford's district, for example. And I remember Commissioner Weatherford, you were at that meeting. And it went very well. There really were, nobody stood up at that meeting and said, "By God, no. I'm not going to support a millage increase, including Commissioner Weatherford." Sometimes these kinds of things are needed. So we will be watching closely as we are now talking about cuts. Uh, for those of us who are, are community activists, we want to make absolutely sure that these cuts do not fall on the backs of the working poor and the folks who need these services, uh, the most. And we certainly support all the efforts that Chairman Boyce has made in his efforts to present this information in a transparent and realistic manner. And we certainly expect our county Commissioners to be, uh, logical and realistic when they look at these kinds of budgets in the future. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Coakley Pendergrass. I'm one of the Associate Ministers at Turner Chapel. I chair a nonprofit called the Georgia Community Coalition and Cobb Faith Partnership. Uh, I want to first applaud you for your, your civic duty. Uh, I don't, I would not want to be with you, uh, be, be you at this point when you're making decis, decisions that affect so many people. I, I ask you to be concerned. We talk about, uh, this, this whole, whole situation where, where we, this housing for those, those, affordable housing, uh, as opposed to, as opposed to equitable housing. That's, you, you're, you're, from a, from a 500-feet, uh, uh, level, you're, you're talking about, there are people down there. There are folks that are being chased out of Cobb County. They, they, they just can't afford. I mean, what's, what's affordable to, to a person who, who, who's making a, a less of an income? They, they would fall into the equitable and there's, there's not many equitable houses or apartments or homes in Cobb County today. I want to be real, uh, a real brief, I want to, want to then step in into this issue of transportation. The last time that the millage rate was changed, it affected so many folks. There was an exodus of folks who, who had to depend on transportation coming out of South Cobb. They couldn't get to work. Now, that, that's where I'll, that's where, where my heart is at, in that South Cobb. Now, I live in, in Marietta, but I, I, I work within the Marietta-South Cobb area. I'm concerned about the folks that are being left behind. You, it's, it's a situation where the decisions you make affect so many people. I, and I understand and I, I respect you all, but you, you have to give concern. You have to, you, 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 it, what, what you do to the least of ours, it, you, you wouldn't do it to yourselves. Now, you wouldn't be in that situation because of God has blessed you, but all are not blessed to be so successful. I thank you for your, for your, your civic duty, but, and I just ask you to, to, what you do, be concerned about the least of ours. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I, uh, was trying really hard to listen this evening to the number of speakers that would come before you. Thank you, my name is Ben Williams.
Dr. Williams, a lot of people know you, but some don't.
Uh, I live in District Four in, in Mableton, Georgia. Um, can I reclaim some of my time because you did interrupt me? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, but I, I wanted to listen because, you, you know, in a different capacity, I have sat where you are. And my experience has been that one of the thing, although a, a, a budget process appears to be contentious and even political, at its foundation, for those of you who sit there is to really grapple with that, massage it, so that the budget becomes an envelope that you, as our leaders, make sure that everyone under your stewardship is cared for. I mean, that's- I mean, that's it. I'm trying to watch my, watch my time. So, so what I wanted to come up, and the first thing is, I wanted to turn myself in. I know that law enforcement is here. When I, when I, when I mean that is, I am a beneficiary as a number of people come before you to say, "We are not willing to give more." You've been generous enough to exempt me from paying school taxes. I'm a beneficiary. I do not pay homestead at all. I benefit from that through the graciousness that there, that's there. And when I look at what's asked for, for me to be somewhat like $20 more a year, possibly, and maybe less than that, in order to help us to be healthy and whole, that seems to me an unselfish act that I can give as a beneficiary of the kindness from this, from this county. That's now nursing a situation, and we ought to all be very clear that this budget shows us what the next year would look like. This budget does not show us what the effects of next year will be upon the year that follows and possibly a year after that. That's the scenario that I'm, you know, I'm used to being in. Okay? The short view of simply saying that we are kind of packaging the budget in such a way to get through next year really doesn't tell the story. Because as we talk about one-time funding, for example, to really do, to be fair to our employees, there's no certainty beyond that, that year. None at all. And government is a service. People provide the service. Folk in Cobb expect, like other places, to have the best service there is. So we need our people. I'm going to stop there, but there's one thing that this budget, I mean, this board can do, and then I'll take my seat. I think that it's within your power to at least consider an action of reconsideration. Thank you.
I'm Fran Mitchell. I live in East Cobb. And I am also a senior citizen getting the homestead exemption, and I happen to like it. I paid school taxes for 30 years, and I think after 30 years, I've entitled to a little bit of a break. I do live, have wonderful schools around me, and I really want to continue keeping the schools good, great, because that helps our property values as well. But I do see a lot of, I want to talk about the transportation. I see an awfully lot of the CCT buses that are running empty. Has anybody thought of doing vouchers through this Cumberland district with Uber or Lyft? Has that been considered at all, instead of taking the carrot from the federal government? We've already done that. I realize that. We bought these buses and stuff. But has anybody considered, have we thought out of, outside of the box on ways to save money? Has anybody thought of that? Let some private industry come in. Uber does an excellent job. I've taken them to and from the airport. My son's taken it to and from the Braves Stadium. We got the Braves Stadium, didn't really want it, but we got it. And every street in my area is being tore up. Terrell Mill seems to get tore up constantly. In fact, they were working on it again today on a median, and I'm there. That median was just done. What, what the heck are we doing? Let's do some coordination, not continue to tear up sidewalks, continue to tear up roads, repave them, and then six months later, let's tear it all up again. On my soapbox, I apologize, but I just think we've got to start thinking outside of the box, people, to save this, the, save the public libraries. I love the public libraries. But to tell you the truth, a theater in a public library, Walton County, Walton High School is getting a theater. What do we need to put one in the library for? Think about where we're spending the money, folks, and be considerate of the taxpayer. And yes, I do like my senior discount. That's why I'm in Cobb.
My name is Ellie Hennington. Chairman Boyce and Commissioners, I'd be remiss if I don't come up and say something. I'm not a senior citizen, so I don't get the discount that some other folks do, Dr. Ben. But I do live in Cobb County, which I chose to live in Cobb County because of the quality of life. And I understand to have a quality of life, it costs a little bit or something. So again, I want to stay here in Cobb County, but if we can't treat our workers, our government employees, they're unhappy right now since the disappointment of the military's being not passed. I don't know if we can, like Ben said, re-react it, but we need to reconsider that. Those Cobb County employers are very, very important to this county. They are very important to y'all because they represent y'all here in the county. We need to make them happy and keep them here. It's just hard now because they are disappointed about not getting paid or even worrying about the part-time employees. It's our job to help them. You know, here as the citizens, we are here to show you how much we care. We just hope that y'all care. And again, I'd be remiss if I wasn't coming up here to say something. I wasn't planning, I don't have no script. It's just that I care about the community and Cobb County as a whole. Thank you.
My name is Gus Macris. I live in East Cobb County, and I thought I'd just take just a minute to express my support for the East Cobb Library. First of all, I use it. I've got four kids, seven, five, three-in-one. My wife is in there every week renting a, renting, borrowing a pile of books. And if that library closes, I'm going to have to buy more books, and then I won't have any money left with all the kids. So that's one reason. But more broadly, everybody uses it. If the numbers in the paper were right, it's about 1,000 books every day that are borrowed there. And I think part of the reason is that it's right in the right spot. You go east and west on Lower Roswell, there's neighborhoods. You go north and south on Johnson Ferry, there's neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to express my support for the East Cobb Library. And also to note that beyond the actual use of the library, it has an expressive value to say that this matters, right? You drive past that library, and having it there expresses that reading matters, that the library matters, that books matter, and that we care about the community. And so with that, I'll conclude. Thanks.
My name is Jackie Bedadepoor. I live in District 2. I live about, less than a mile from the East Cobb Library. I love libraries. I use the East Cobb Library. But we have three libraries in East Cobb. We have a brand-new library that is not yet open called the East Marietta Library that would, is about five miles from where I live, as opposed to less than a mile in the East Cobb Library. We have the Mountain View Library, which is about five, six miles from where I live as well. And I'm just wondering, how many libraries do we need in East Cobb? And if people wanted that library so badly, then maybe we should be willing to pay for it with an increase in the military. I would hate to see libraries closed in areas like South Cobb, who need them much more. We in East Cobb, we're an affluent community. We have good schools with good libraries. I would venture to say that very few people do not have Internet access in their homes. They own cars. They drive. There's no reason why they can't go to the East Marietta Library or the Mountain View Library. So if we have to make cuts because they're not, people aren't willing to adopt a new millage, a higher millage rate, then I would prefer to see those cuts at the East Cobb Library rather than in South Cobb. Thank you.
I'm Wynne McCurdy, and I live in District 2. And I've been in this community for a long time, and I live in District 3. My Commissioner just corrected me, so all is good. I live in East Cobb, and I'm concerned about the community. I'm a little disappointed that the millage rate wasn't passed and, you know, to do, you're kicking that can down the road as far as, you know, balancing the budget. And of course, I'm very involved in the arts in the community. We've talked a lot about libraries, but there's also a lot of arts facilities that, a day was made dark in 2010, and those days didn't come back. And so now we're talking about more, you know, cuts and closings. And if you think about the faces of the children that go to those art centers and go to our parks, and it's not just about the numbers, but it's about the lives that are affected. And it really is about quality of life in Cobb. And yes, it keeps growing, and you keep having more services required, and yeah, it costs us a few more dollars a year. But I certainly think it's well worth that increase, and I know it's already been kind of decided, but if it can have a revisit, I really think that you should. You know, we're just, you know, we're good for 2018. And what happens then? There isn't another slush fund or to borrow from. And so rather than cut those services and think about, like I said, it's about those children, about lives that are affected. And the ripple effect of not having those services are huge. It affects families. It affects people's being able to be successful. I wasn't great in school. I was so glad that I had dance. It was the only place that I would really accept discipline, and a lot of young people find that in the arts and through sports. And so I'm just really very concerned about what's going to happen next year's budget. So thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Seeing no more speakers, I now declare this public hearing to a close. And I think we'll take a short recess. Five minutes, say, come back at 10 after. Okay? I apologize. Okay. I apologize for overrunning the break. My mistake. But we're back in session now, and so we're on tab six, which is public hearing, right?
Public comment, yes, sir. Norm Fag.
I'm Norm Fag. I represent the Cobb Parks Coalition, and I'm going to be very brief. First of all, we want to commend you for issuing the park bond and for promising to fund the remaining $13 million.
The chairman.
Huh?
The chairman called the city to fund.
The chairman did. The chairman did because he's a great leader. You should, you should all be great leaders. And we remind you not to forget, we know it's not going to happen in 2018, but we're going to keep reminding you from now until 2019. We urge you to quickly purchase appropriate land for parks with the money from the bond and perhaps to seek assistance from the Trust for Public Land or other similar nonprofits to help in negotiating these sales. And we implore you to make the acquisition of land for parks a regular part of every budget. We beseech you to devote 20% of Cobb County's total acreage to green space in the land use plan and in the comprehensive plan. And finally, we request that you provide a public update of the progress of parkland acquisition, similar to updates provided for Braves Stadium progress. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Burkinbye.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager David Burkinbye, Medical Burn Ban. I'm confused here, so maybe my perception is messed up. Section 54114 on subparagraph I. The fire chief shall be authorized to ban outdoor burning in a limited geographical area upon receipt of a medical documentation from a resident that the resident has a medical condition adversely affected by smoke. Unenforceable, and it's a law. H. Fire chief shall authorize, shall be authorized to require the extinguishment of any fire if it adversely affects or interferes with the enjoyment of life or use of property. Another fault, it won't be enforced. Another saying by the fire marshal, when he combines all these together, even though you follow all the guidelines for burning, you may be required to extinguish the fire if it adversely interferes with another's enjoyment of life, use of property, or if someone with a health problem is affected. That's another fault. You can call 911 all day long, and it doesn't make any difference. It will not be put out. So, I mean, what am I missing here? Y'all made the law, so I mean, you know, I just, I just can't understand what I'm missing. Here is the application we filled out when my wife had her medical burn ban. That was 2014, and I'm still fighting it. I fought it a little bit in 2015, and here it is 2017, and we're kicking this can down the road again. Why wasn't it enforced? Oh, but wait. We can have this application and have a new application, and we could have put an addendum down here. Even though it's approved, it's only for outdoor burning of yard debris. It's smoke. And then they, they state the other one on the supposedly restriction, exemption for outdoor burning restrictions. It's not a restriction, it's a ban. Single-family resident attached, detached dwelling, burning in a chimney, fire bowl or other similar device, or outdoor fireplace unless garbage being burned. Smoke is smoke. It's going to affect you. It doesn't make any difference what fire it is. He can put it out. And we call, and we talk, want to talk about the letter of the law. These people here, and the exemption had. How come these people over here, where it has in the county code, why don't they have the letter of the law behind them? Why aren't they being fulfilled in their obligation when they put out the application and got it approved and the fire marshal approved it? How come we're not backing them up? I mean, it's just, it's just getting on the point of crazy. It's, it's just another law that was passed for only a few peoples affected supposedly. Well, there's more than a few. You're going to have people with heart problems. You're going to have people with medical problems. You're going to have people born with problems. You're going to have people with genetic problems. You're going to have people with problems. And if smoke affects them, it affects them. And if our interpretation is whatever you want it to be, whatever you want it to be, whatever you want it to be, then it will never be solved. It's what y'all need it to be. Don't leave it in limbo to have a authority to interpret the law. Have them enforce the law. There's no interpretation there as far as I'm concerned. I believe it's cut and dry. Put it out. If you're called, put it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkinbye. I want to direct my comments to...
I want to direct my comments to, um, the Chair on us exploring this loophole that's here that, um, seems to give assurance that there wouldn't be outdoor burning in the medical burn ban area, but, you know, these exemptions are not known to those that apply. You know, this, the argument today just seemed, you know, quite plain, and Mr. Birkenbine has been here, uh, meeting after meeting, expressing his desire for support, and I just, I, I guess I'm at the point where I'd like to see how we can come up with a ordinance to balance the interest of those who, who do apply for a medical burn ban. It seems from what he read verbatim that, um, there is discretion on behalf of the fire chief, and, yeah, there may be a way to explore that discretion and, and look at even a permitting process for those that want to burn outdoors and those exempt, with those exempted uses to do it at a specific time, or give notice, or some way, there just seems to be opportunity to better balance, um, this issue. So I don't know if any of the commissioners are interested in supporting it, but I'm just declaring publicly I'll support that. I don't know when we have our next ordinance change, but, um, it's unfortunate that you have to come here and continue to keep saying the same thing, that when you read it verbatim, it seems very clear that there hasn't been adequate protection in, in how we've communicated that to those that have taken the time to fill out that paperwork for the permit, I mean, for the, for the ban. I guess word to our community development director that I, I'd like to support this and during our next code enforcement, our next, our code, consideration of code changes whenever that comes up. Okay?
Fran Mitchell. Mike Holtsnek, excuse me, I'm not mispronouncing that.
I think I, good evening, commissioners. I'm Mike Holtskennett. I think I can be brief and pleasant here. How many of you guys besides Commissioner Ott in room have ever heard of a Rosenwald school? Okay. Cobb is home to one of the most historically important sites in the South. You haven't heard about the Rosenwald School? It is a school in Acworth, the Julius Rosenwald School. Julius Rosenwald was the head of Sears Roebuck and one of the richest men in America. He was also a great philanthropist. About 100 years ago, Booker T. Washington, educator and leader in the black community, met with Rosenwald and informed him of the educational needs in the South. White kids didn't do well, black kids a whole lot worse. Together, they devised a plan. Rosenwald would donate a third of the money for a school. The black community would come up with a third, and the local white community would come up with a third too. This is a bare-bones school, no running water or indoor bathrooms. They built 5,317 schools. About one-third of all black schools in the South were Julius Rosenwald schools. They produced the black middle class in the South, which produced economic growth and civil rights victories. With modern integrated schools, the Rosenwald schools fell into disrepair. There are now less than 500. Some of the integrated schools weren't all that great, but at least they had indoor plumbing, which made them attractive. The Rosenwald School is now a community center. Though a few of its neighbors, and I went and knocked on some doors and said hello, are aware of its history. Julius Rosenwald was not in my American history book, and apparently not in anybody else's American history book. I hope the City of Acworth, Cobb County, and the school board and tourist board could find a way to honor and commemorate this truly remarkable historical site. Few years ago, they moved it from its location down the street, I've read, and in doing that, they put water lines in there and indoor bathrooms. So it's about half the size of this room. It makes a cute little community center up in Acworth, 4410 Cherokee Street. You can look in the window, it looks nice. And when people think about Cobb County, we want them to think about a little bit more than a chicken that goes like that, that's an advertisement for a food, fast food company. And we've got, I think there's less than 500 Rosenwald schools left. I doubt very many of them are in this good a condition. We've got something special in Cobb. We can market it. And that's all I've got. The gentleman was up here before chatting. I got an opportunity to listen to him. Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for listening to him. He had a good story. And thank you very much. I was going to say something nice about Commissioner Bo, Bo, Chairman Bo, but I'm running out of time. I'll just write a letter to the M D J.
That was a great town hall meeting up in Acworth.
Ron Siphon.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon. I'm going to continue discussing transit. Earlier, we heard with transit, it's not about money, it's about people. And that's, I would agree that transit is about people. But in the real world, transit is also about money. It's about both. If you have $1,000, and with that $1,000, you can invest it over here and address the needs of 20 people. And you have a choice, because over here, you can also use the $1,000 over here, and over here, you can address the needs of 200 people. Are you going to put the money over here and address the needs of 20 people at the expense of not addressing the needs of 200 people over here? In the real world, that's actually your choice. You have a limited amount of money, and you need to invest that money as cost effectively as possible in meeting the needs of as many people as you can with transit. So in talking, going back to the question of empty buses, these aren't empty buses yet. We've been talking about Sunday service. This is not the time to implement Sunday service. Sunday service is going to be very low ridership, and there may be a time that we can address Sunday service. But Sunday service is going to be very low ridership. We're going to need that money elsewhere. The flex service has very low ridership. At the last Transit Advisory Board meeting, uh, one of the pieces of information that we were provided was that the average cost per rider on the flex for the previous month was $45 per rider. That's just simply unsustainable. The flex service area needs transit, but we're going to have to find a far more cost-effective way of addressing the transportation needs of people in that area. I think it's very important that we maintain service in that area. People in, in the flex service area, they're clearly people who need transit for their transportation, but we've got to find a more cost of, cost-effective way to address that. The routes 10 and 30 obviously have very high ridership. I believe that if we follow through and implement the 10X, that it will have very high ridership. We have a lot of other routes that, uh, there, there, people talk about the other routes as having empty buses, but really and truly, that's where I think that the empty buses' claim is overstated. I think that the other routes have enough ridership to justify maintaining those routes. Are there times of day that some of those other routes have empty buses? There may be, and it could be that we need to reduce the frequency of those buses at certain times of day. So that's, that's something that maybe needs to be on the table, but I do think that our other routes are justified by overall ridership. Transit Service Plan, um, I understand, um, that the, some of the reasons for not going through with the Transit Service Plan at this time. Ultimately, I think that CCT is going to need a Transit Service Plan done. I think it needs to, I think there's a whole bunch of stuff in the current proposal that, yeah, it's way overboard. It needs to be scaled back, it needs to be focused on existing service and making it more efficient. So I think the Transit Service Plan needs to be overhauled, maybe it needs to be delayed for a while. I think it does need to eventually be done. Thank you.
Mr. Lancy.
Hey, good evening. My name is Monica Delancey. I live in, I'm in the Riverside Community in Ossdale. Um, I think Mike left, but I do know a little bit about the Rosenwald. Um, I graduated from Dilling University, and one of our buildings was named after Rosenwald, so that's a connection then I have with Mike. Um, first, I want to congratulate, um, Precinct Two, Cobb County Police Department Precinct Two, Captain Hamilton, Major Van Hooser. On August 5th, along with the 100 black men, they hosted a community cleanup in the Riverside Community. Over 102 volunteers participated, and, thank you. And, um, there were 88 bags of litter that we picked up from Riverside Parkway, around, um, the amusement park, as well as on City View. So I want to talk about that, um, and congratulate Precinct Two on that. And then right after that, on August the 8th, I want to thank Commissioner Cupid, along with the Board of Commissioners, for hosting, um, and giving us a proclamation, um, for hosting, um, National Night Out and the Safety Blitz. Chairman Bo, I had to get your T-shirt to you, okay? You missed out on that. But it was held August 8th at the South Cobb Recreation Center in the evening time, and it was very well attended, and, um, and it was the first that hosted the Safety Blitz at night in partnership with, um, National Night Out. So, and then, so again, I want to congratulate Chief Crider for taking a chance doing that, and, um, um, Mr. Heaton, and as well as Precinct Two for, for doing that, because that was the first time to host the Safety Blitz in the evening time. Okay, so it brings me to this, that August 8th, we held the Safety Blitz, and you know what that was all about, safety, fire safety, police safety. And this week, we started our fourth week of school in Cobb County. Today, this morning, um, we had about 15 students who left their home, you know, going to school, and then returned home to burnt building, Whisperwood Apartments on Riverside Parkway. So, um, it's not official yet, but we think, we know we have about 15 students were affected. 49 people were affected. And just want to say that, um, I want to first commend the fire department for being out there. When I arrived, when I arrived about 4:30, the fire department was just, you know, wrapping up, and then you had the, you know, Red Cross, they were there, um, trying to assess the situation and find out the best remedy to assist 49, um, people. And then we had, um, you know, the police department was there, um, as well, monitoring as well, to make sure of safety, you know, no one entered the building. I also want to commend Officer Crichton, because, um, when I arrived, there were, um, water, Red Cross brought water, but it was hot. And before Officer Crichton left, he said, "Mr. Lancy, there's a thing I could do for you." I said, "Can you go get some ice so we can get some, you know, cold water for, for the residents?" And he did that, so I just want to make sure I, I did note, note that. But, um, also, we had, um, you know, the school reacted real fast. Um, they told the, um, students not, you know, was able to call the parents and say, "Okay, we keeping the kids, you come to get the kids from the school," you know, Dr. Billis from Riverside Primary and Dr. Sweeney. And in addition to that, the Community Connector called the bus over to the school to make sure that the parents were aware that their students was back at the school. So that was a well-coordinated effort. And then we had our, what I call a rapper response team. While I was out there at Whisperwood, I was able to, um, assess the situation, but I did have to contact, you know, some community stakeholders, Albert McRae, um, he came out, and then Annette Hughes was able to not only, um, meet with, um, Sweetwater Camp with Dr. Wunduk, but she brought over some gift cards as well to give out to the families. Now, I don't know, you know, the amount, each family got a different amount from Red Cross, but what I was told, um, you know, $300, maybe up to 500. Again, that's a couple nights stay at a hotel, um, if you are able to get some clothes, if you are, you know, get some food, but there's going to be a need for wraparound services, intense wraparound services for this community. And you know, I give you the numbers every time I come and tell you, about the Riverside Community is 55% rental. 70% of, of these, of the, um, people that live in the community pay over 50% of their income on housing. In addition to that, 90% of the families are receiving free and reduced lunch. So there's no way that we can leave here tonight. I hope you come up with a plan real quick, talk to some people, that we're thinking that those families are going to be okay with just a couple hundred dollars to, to hold them over to Thursday. And they have no clothes, no food, and, and, and even to start the process of finding a place to stay. So that's why I'm here tonight, wait till 9:30 to speak, because I want to make sure that went on record. Thank you very much.
Chairman, that's all the speakers.
I wanted to thank, um, Mr. Lancy for coming out and speaking tonight, and appreciate all of the support that the community has provided to those displaced residents. I had an opportunity to briefly speak to our Director Heaton, and we recognize there is some limitation with Red Cross's support, and I don't want to misspeak Director, so let me know if I'm wrong, but there are some efforts to try to find additional resources that are being conducted by our emergency management, um, office. So that effort is underway, but also during the meeting, I received a message from a woman who you had referred to, Annette Hughes, in reference to the Kids Home Initiative, which is provided through Sweetwater Mission. The Kids Home Initiative helps families escape homelessness and stay in school, and they provide wraparound services to students at risk for facing homelessness. And they said that they offer financial assistance, like first month's rent, financial planning, and integrated case management. And they said all the working families displaced by the fire and deemed homeless are eligible to participate in that program. And Ms. Hughes provided that information to all of the schools that could potentially be impacted. She has about, um, 10 persons from the schools here, so I'm hoping that that program, which is supported through United Way, will be able to come in and help those families that have children who've been displaced. I recognize that there may be a gap with families that don't have children in the schools. I'm hoping Director Heaton, if you can just continue to have the agency be in contact with Monica and those in the community, and if we need to reach out to additional nonprofit organizations, that we'll do our best to do that. Thank you, Chief Carter, I see you back there, and I know it was your men and women who are out there fighting that fire, and we thank you for helping to ensure the safety of those families. I understand there were no fatalities that occurred tonight, which is, which is a great thing. So thank you, Monica, appreciate you coming here and, um, speaking on behalf of those residents.
Okay, there, no more, more public comment? Okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for that information. I'm sure Monica will use that to, uh, get to the right people. All right, let's move on to tab seven. Consent agenda, and I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second discussion?
Yes, sir. I need to, uh, with the board's mission, pull item 20 from consent. Uh, as a consultant of public safety, there's some issues with the contract, we want to hold that one.
Okay, so then I'll modify my statement to say consent agenda as revised.
For item 20, for the record, is that correct? Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we have a second. Okay, so we have a second, any discussion? First discussion, call a question. It passes five to zero. Okay. Tab 8. Mr. Wilgus?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Managers. We have 10 items tonight. Our first item is to approve a contract with Excedera Construction LLC for Atlanta Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $144,700 from Excedera Construction LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is 45 consecutive calendar days from issuance of the notice received. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Excedera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $144,700 for Atlanta Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Otte.
Motion to approve.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for Thoroughfare Improvements on Barrett Parkway at Roberts Court and George Busby Parkway. Barrett Parkway at Roberts Court and Judge George Busby Parkway is an approved project in the Thoroughfare Improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $55,325,028, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $55,325,028 for thoroughfare improvements for Barrett Parkway at Roberts Court and George Busby Parkway.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Lawwell and Construction Company for Piedmont Road East Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Lawwell and Construction Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $44,018.18, is requested due to variation between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Lawwell and Construction Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $44,018.18 for Piedmont Road East Sidewalk.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Excedera Construction LLC for Drainage System Repairs on Cahili Drive. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Excedera Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $27,406.47, is requested due to variation between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Excedera Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $27,406.47 for Drainage System Repairs on Cahili Drive.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve Consultant Service Agreement with Southeastern Engineering, Inc. for the Engineering Design of New Macklin Road. New Macklin Road is an approved roadway and safety operational improvement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a Consultant Service Agreement with Southeastern Engineering, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $248,468 for engineering design of New Macklin Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements, also known as Chitum Hill Monta Use Trail, is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Marietta. The department is in receipt of a memorandum of agreement from the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. GDOT has estimated that the oversight fee for this project will be $20,000. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements and authorize a payment of an engineering oversight fee in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Sir, just to be clear, this is for the projects that are on Georgia highways, correct? Dallas Highway? You're not going to oversee?
No, there's three of them. One is on Dallas Highway, one of the City of Marietta portions on Burnt Hickory, the exclusive Cobb County, and one is on Chitum Hill Road. There's three different sections.
I understand, but those aren't Georgia?
They're not, but this has got an earmark, earmark that's been repurposed from GDOT for this.
Okay, all right, I understand. Motion to approve is presented.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is to amend a previously approved intergovernmental agreement with the City of Roswell for engineering design of Willio Road over Willio Creek. Willio Road over Willio Creek is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Roswell. The IGA details the responsibilities of both the city and the county for terms of the amended IGA. Costs related to the engineering, utility relocation, and construction of the bridge replacement itself will be shared equally at 50% each. We request the Board of Commissioners amend a previously approved intergovernmental agreement with the City of Roswell for engineering design of Willio Road over Willio Creek.
Commissioner Otte?
Motion to approve.
Second, and a question?
Yes, ma'am. This is SPOS money.
Any further discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is to approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Old 41 Highway. Old 41 Highway is an approved roadway transportation improvement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Old 41 Highway and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Calix Engineers and Consultants, utilizing Selection Process One competitive negotiation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine is to approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of John Ward Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of John Ward Road Sidewalk and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Barge Wagner Sumner and Cannon, Inc., utilizing Selection Process One competitive negotiation.
Commissioner Burrow? I'm sorry, Weatherford again.
Sure. Quick question. I'm seeing a lot of new engineering firms. Are we getting more bids than we used to, or something some I haven't seen before?
Yes, sir, we've gotten a lot more, a lot more firms. This firm is based in Nashville, Tennessee, but has an office in Georgia, as well as several other offices. So we've really gotten a new influx of new engineering firms that have been proposing and winning our projects.
Good, great, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is to authorize procurement of video management software and associated equipment for incident management. Incident management is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of video management software and associated equipment at a total project cost not to exceed $20,073.76 for incident management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. And it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wilgus. On to Tab 9. And Mr. Geese.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. We have five items for you tonight. Our first item this evening is for the Board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company for the resurfacing of parking lots and access roadways at Fuller's, Fair Oaks, and Ryan Park under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. The work has been satisfactory completed in each of these parks, with the cost savings resulting from unused quantities of unit price items. Therefore, we ask the Board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company in the amount of $395,832.96.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. That's almost a third of savings there, isn't it?
Yes, sir. We aim to please.
We're going to have uses for that, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our next item is for the Board to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the Contract with Eastern Environmental to provide lead-based paint stabilization and exterior preservation at the Clarkdale Community Center. Unfortunately, after only two weeks of work on this project, the building was completely consumed by fire. This deductive change order represents the total confirmed value of time and material that had been expended by the contractor prior to the loss of the building. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the Contract with Eastern Environmental with a credit of $53,663.79 to provide lead-based paint stabilization and exterior preservation at the Clarkdale Community Center.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This has been an unfortunate event for this community and support this agenda item, and just want to share with Commissioners that we're trying to creatively think about how we'll address the build of this community center considering this law. So we may come back to you later with different options, but for today, I'd like to support this motion shared by Jimmy.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our third item is for the Board to approve a contract with Sprint Turf LLC for the conversion of grass fields to synthetic turf fields at Mud Creek Soccer Complex, Hubert Soccer Complex, and Terrill Mill Park under the 2011 and 2016 Park SPOS Program. Both capital programs include funding for athletic field renovations, including the conversion from grass to synthetic turf. Included in this conversion project are four fields at the Hubert Soccer Complex, three fields at Mud Creek, and one field at Terrill Mill Park. The new synthetic turf fields will offer several advantages over grass fields, including lower maintenance costs, increased programming opportunities, and improved playability. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Sprint Turf LLC in an amount not to exceed $5,113,759 for the conversion of athletic fields to synthetic turf at Mud Creek, Hubert, and Terrill Mill Parks under the 2011 and 2016 SPOS Program.
Commissioner Weatherford, could you carry that motion, please?
Sure. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
Yes, Jimmy, can you just talk a little bit about how maintenance of these fields is going to change under this?
Well, we would definitely not have to water, we would not have to irrigate, I mean fertilize or cut them. Basically, the only maintenance we'll have to do is a couple times a year, go and fluff up the crumb rubber. So it's going to be a whole lot easier, and we spend more time on the outside areas of the field.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. And the motion?
I don't know if, I'm sorry.
Passes five to zero.
Our next item is for the Board to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Service to perform modifications and upgrades to athletic field lighting and poles in support of the synthetic turf conversions at Mud Creek, Hubert, and Terrill Mill Parks under the 2016 Park SPOS. An anticipated expenditure in the synthetic turf field conversion was the relocation of several light poles. The new turf will not support the weight of bucket trucks or the outriggers from mechanical lifts needed to service the fixtures at the top of the poles. The retrofit at two of the parks is relatively simple by moving the existing poles at Terrill Mill and moving two while replacing four at Hubert Soccer Complex. However, eight new poles fitted with ladders and cages are required at Mud Creek due to the high number of fixtures per field. Based on the high cost to rehang these existing fixtures, staff explored the option of replacing the large number of 10-year-old fixtures with modern LED. Because of the work already having to be completed, we will actually be able to install LED fixtures on those three fields at one-third of the normal cost to light a field with LED fixtures. This change would reduce the energy consumption per fixture from 1,500 watts to 750 watts. Basically, what that means when all three fields are burning, instead of $30 per hour for power, it's only going to cost us $14 per hour. They would also come with a new 10-year manufacturer's warranty. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical in an amount not to exceed $550,755.23 to perform modifications and upgrades to athletic field lighting and poles in support of the synthetic turf conversions at Mud Creek, Hubert, and Terrill Mill Parks.
Commissioner Cupid, could you carry that motion, please?
Sure. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our final item this evening is for the Board to approve the Appendix E Authorization for Construction, along with a previously approved contract, which constitutes the guaranteed maximum price with Reeves Young LLC for construction manager at risk services for the replacement of Buildings A and B with a new exhibit hall at Jim R. Miller Park under the 2016 Park SPOS Program. Last October, the Board awarded a construction manager at risk contract with Reeves Young that provided funding for pre-construction and general conditions totaling $330,679 as a portion of the guaranteed maximum price for this project. Reeves Young, our architect, TBS Design, and staff have worked together as a team to plan and design the exhibit hall. Immediately following this year's fair, Buildings A and B will be demolished, and the new exhibit hall will be constructed in their place. The new facility will be an excellent location for meetings, banquets, and trade shows. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve Appendix E Authorization for Construction, along with a previously approved contract, which constitutes the guaranteed maximum price with Reeves Young LLC in an amount of $13,231,144 for construction manager at risk services for the replacement of existing exhibit halls with a new exhibit hall facility at Jim R. Miller Park under the 2016 Park SPOS Program.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. One quick question. You've got the impact statement, which I appreciate, it tells what the ongoing cost. But that is not the net, actually, because we already have costs associated that, so it'd be somewhere between less than that, correct?
Well, the fees that will be generated from this new type of facility is yet to be determined. As part of the design, the architect is doing an operational analysis on this type of a building, which will give us recommendations for a fee structure for the new building. We firmly believe that that is going to offset a majority of those additional costs, but it's just a belief right now.
Well, great. I just wanted the public to know that we do have some fees coming in. Plus, we already have expenses now, which we won't have because you're tearing the buildings down, so it'll be somewhat less than this. Motion to approve is presented.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. All right, on to Tab 10.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I will take a second just to say some stuff y'all just approved. People dreamed of that for a long time, so thank you for approving those items in parks. So very dear to my heart. One item tonight from Information Services, the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $116,500 for software development, customization of GIS software, and analytic tools to store, view, and analyze data feeds from multiple outside sources for the GIS Big Data Project. We ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. You still here?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. The property has five items. The first is to authorize the amendment to the previously approved contract for security modifications to the Square Judicial Complex to include systems expansion related to the magistrate court renovation. The Building Security Emergency Life Safety Upgrades Program is an eligible capital improvement program under the 2016 SPOS. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOS Building Security Project Budget. The Board of Commissioners authorize an amendment to the previously approved contract with Black Creek and Integrated Systems Corporation in the amount Creek Integrated Systems Corporation in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars for a total revised contract amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred dollars for the security modifications at the Square Judicial Complex to include system expansion related to magistrate court renovation located at thirty-two Waddell Street, Marietta, 2011-2016 Splot Project, authorizing corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, motion to approve.
A second in discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero.
All right, thank you. The second item is the purchase and the installation of the audiovisual equipment for the magistrate court renovation. The magistrate court renovation is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 Splot. The audiovisual purchase and installation is covered by a state purchasing contract available to Cobb County through Unified AV Systems. Funding is available in the 2016 Splot Project Budget. The Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Unified AV Systems in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars for the purchase and installation of the audiovisual equipment for the magistrate court renovation located at thirty-two Waddell Street, Marietta, a 2011 Splot and 2016 Splot Project, authorizes corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second in discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero.
All right, thank you. The third item is for the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment for the North Cobb Senior Center Expansion. The North Cobb Senior Center Expansion and renovation is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 Splot. The audiovisual purchase and installation is covered by a state purchasing contract available to the Cobb County through the Unified AV Systems. Funding is available in the 2016 Splot Project Budget. The Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Unified AV Systems in the amount of seventy thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and one cent for the purchase and installation of the audiovisual equipment for the North Cobb Senior Center Expansion and renovation. A 2011-2016 Splot Project authorizes corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Sure, we had a quick question. It mentions 2011 and 16 Splot. Is there remaining an eleven to use to help fund this for the senior center?
Because the senior center is a 2016 project, so why are we using 2011 money in this project?
There was additional money in 2011. There was no 2011.
For the system. The system itself is a 2011, and it's going to go into a 2016 project, right? I'm just confused why we have 2011 money into 2016 project.
It is tied. I have to get back to you about that. Let me get with you.
I believe if I'm correct, we had some renovations in the 2011.
It was deferred.
For the auto.
Right.
It was deferred because we were going to rebuild it in 16.
That's correct. Commissioner Weatherford.
So that just came to me, sir. I had an epiphany or something. Motion to approve is presented.
Any discussion? We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I don't have an answer for you there. The fourth. Okay, the fourth item is to approve a supplemental agreement number four to the contract with Controlled Access Incorporated for the additional security system upgrades and building modifications at the Cobb County Building. Supplemental Agreement Number Four will add the identified security feature to the revolving door to prevent unauthorized entry into the restricted area. Funding is available in the capital projects budget. The Board of Commissioners approve a supplemental agreement number four to the contract with Controlled Access Incorporated in the amount of fifteen thousand, thirty-three dollars for additional security system upgrades and building modifications at the Cobb County Building located at one hundred Cherokee Street, Marietta, authorizes the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you. Got one more. Our final item is to approve. Our final item is to approve a contract with Yancey Construction Services LLC for the installation of secure revolving doors at State Court and the Public Safety Buildings. The Building Security Emergency Life Safety Upgrades is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2011-2016 Splot Program. Funding is available in the 2011 Splot and 2016 Splot Project Budgets. The Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Yancey Construction Services LLC in amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the installation of the secure revolving doors, including two at the State Court Building located at twelve East Park Square, and one at the Public Safety Building located at one eighty-five Roswell Street, authorizes corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve and a question.
We have a second first? We have a second, okay.
Are these the same doors for both items for this building and the courts?
No, what we're approving here was for State Court and Public Safety.
Right, but the item before this was for our building here?
Yes, ma'am.
And the building here is a million dollars and the building at State Court's three hundred and forty-five thousand. Is it the same door or new?
Well, this was additional work. The million dollars included the cameras, all the door access, cameras in the parking decks.
Oh, and the cars.
So it was just part of a overall project.
Okay.
Okay, we have any further discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Now, Sam, you can come up.
I was getting concerned, the young man back here, the intern, I know he needs to get on home. Trying to sway him against being in your shoes, I guess, right? Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Rob, Mr. County Manager. Here tonight to approve the purchase of two crime scene evidence collection vehicles. The Searchie is a sole source manufacturer that provides the evidence collection vehicles. They're designed to endure the caustic reagents and chemicals and forensic kits. These vehicles will be outfitted for the collection of, for the collection kits, storage units, and a writing desk. The two fully equipped Searchie evidence collection vehicles will not exceed one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. The purchase of these two vehicles is an increase in the fleet with an estimated fuel and annual maintenance cost of about twenty-four hundred dollars. Funding is available in the 2016 Splot Project and therefore recommending the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of two Searchie crime scene evidence collection vehicles in amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
A second in discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more public comment? A public hearing? A public comment, Bill?
There are a few others on the list, but it looks like they all spoke during the public hearing on the bill.
Okay. Make sure we didn't miss anybody. In that case, we'll go to tab fifteen. We pulled it. We pulled it, yeah. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Cheryl Stevenson to the Civil Service Board.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Joe Mays to the Recreation Board. You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. And I'd like to make a motion to authorize a submission to the Kennison Hospital Authority. The names for consideration for appointment to the Kennison Hospital Authority to fill the expired term of post seven. You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Marcus A. Thurman to the Region One Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities Planning Board.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero. And then finally, I'd like to announce the appointments of Francia Brown to post five, Dr. Patrina Botler to post thirteen, Patricia Kellner to post fourteen, and Sarah Diamond to post fifteen to the Workforce Development Board tonight. With that, move on to Commissioner comments, and I'll start tonight with Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam Heaton kind of referred to him, but I would like to introduce to the board and staff my new intern, Carter Gooch. Carter, you can go up and say hello. Carter is senior at Wheeler High School Magnet Program and also one of my Eagle Scouts.
Oh, terrific. All right.
All right, so I won't use the mic tonight. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I would like to face, as much as I love the five of you on the board, I'd like to address the audience. Go ahead, is that? Okay, so I'm Carter Gooch. I'm a senior Wheeler High School, and for this fall term, I am interning with Mr. Ott. I'm sorry for not following the policy. All right, I will not take too much of your time. Thank you.
Just watch out, he's going places. You better watch your back. You'd be watching yours. All right, the next thing I want to do is I want to give a shout out to the contractor that worked for the county water system. We've heard lots about the water pipeline on Lower Roswell Road and Terrell Mill Road, but what you didn't hear a lot about was the pipeline that they added on Paper Mill Road. They came in, they put the pipeline in, they kept it out of the roadway, got it done before school started, and we did not receive a single email complaint. So hats off to Steve, your folks, and the contractor that did that. Second thing, there's, and John Gargus, I'm not dumping on you on this one, but there seems to be a little misunderstanding in what was written in the newspaper about a statement that supposedly I made at the last commission meeting. I'm going to read a quote, Mr. Chairman. Basically, the quote says, "The hole gets filled one of two ways. The millage rate goes up or we cut. And so if we come back and I, and cut, I don't want to see anyone here if service centers are closed or library hours are cut," and things like that. End of quote. That is what I said. Finally, I received a letter here from some of the folks who live on Stillhouse Road over in Vinings. I know Stephen Coleridge knows this, there's a lot of water issues over there, but they had a recent rain event, and this is really a shout out for Jim, for your folks, Bill Shelton, everyone's man on the hour. But basically, they had a tree come down across his drive, they called DOT, and very quickly, folks showed up with power saws, the large truck and the tripper, and all was well. The person whose driveway was blocked is kind of, has difficulty walking, so it was a big event for him. And specifically, they wanted to thank Joel Noblet, the limb loader operator, Ed Copeland, the truck driver, and Johnny Smith, the equipment operator. So thanks for a job well done. And finally, on September sixteenth, for those that live in East Cobb, the annual East Cobb Parade will start at ten o'clock. I know Commissioner Burrow and I are going to be there. I think the Chairman's out of town, and that's when we get to throw out candy. So that's all.
I have a couple of announcements, and then I would like to respond to some of the comments that were made tonight and some of the emails that we've been receiving. First of all, congratulations to Patty Latch. She's celebrating forty years of service to the Cobb County Library System. And yesterday, we had an eclipse party viewing, and it was a great turnout. Thank you Helen and your staff for hosting us and for a great event that won't happen again for ninety-nine years. And thanks to Patty, thank you Patty for your service to our library. Also, if y'all recall earlier this month, the Harrison Park, it had, we dedicated the field for Chipper Jones at Harrison Park, and in the game day program at the game last night, it is recognized. So I know Eddie Cannon and Jimmy Geese would like to see a copy of this, but we've made it big time, so this is in the game day program, and just like to say thanks to the Braves for renovating the field at Harrison Park. On Thursday, this Thursday, the twenty-fourth Cobb DOT and the City of Marietta Department of Public Works will host a public information open house from five to seven at the Musministry's Community Room, fourteen oh seven Cobb Parkway North for the old forty-one highway CSX Railroad Bridge replacement. And you're welcome to come view the project, ask questions, and provide comments. There will be feedback forms for your comments, and everyone is invited to attend. I've been receiving, and as well as some of the other, the board here, emails requesting that the East Cobb Library remain open, and at this time, I'd just like to provide some facts and history regarding this issue. This is not and has never been a personal agenda. Anyone that knows me knows that I don't operate like that. This is about being a responsible steward of taxpayer monies. It's a board decision, not one Commissioner's decision. It's one suggestion on consolidation of services, and I welcome the board to look at any other ways that we can balance the budget and save money. Last month, the board voted three to two not to increase the millage rate. In keeping the rate flat, we committed to look at ways to be more efficient, consolidate services, and make cuts to nonessential services. This is part of my commitment to review ways that we, that the county can save money by eliminating duplication of services. The consolidation of our libraries has been a plan for years in the making. When Chairman Olens was here, the plan was to move toward regional libraries geographically located in the county and close the smaller satellite libraries. In 2011, when we proposed closing thirteen of the seventeen libraries, keeping only the four regional libraries, we received over five thousand emails and comments demanding that we not close libraries. So the libraries remained open, but the hours were reduced, and Sunday service still is not in any of the libraries with the exception of Schweitzer during the school year. In 2014, when the Splot list was voted on, the District One Commissioner at the time proposed a regional library for Acworth and Kennesaw areas and requested that we close the two smaller libraries in the cities when the regional library was ready to open. This makes sense and has been the plan all along in District One. For District Two in the 2016 Splot, it was decided that we would construct not only a library, but a library and a cultural arts center to include a music room, art center, amphitheater, and more at a cost of ten point six million dollars on property that the county will own. It was projected that the staff and operations costs for the new library and cultural arts center would cost seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. The new Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Arts Center replaces the East Marietta Library. The East Cobb Library is five miles away from the new library and cultural arts center. The county currently pays twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents a month in a lease for the East Cobb Library. We don't own that. And it's two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and forty a year. For that amount of money, just for the lease, we could hire three police officers of the sixty that the IACP recommends we add. The staff and operations currently at the East Cobb Library costs seven The staff and operations currently at the East Cobb Library costs seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-four cents a year. The account, the amount for staff and operations could be used to partially fund the staffing and operations at the new library and cultural arts center. Also, the East Marietta Library staff costs five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents per year. And the staff and operation costs for the new locations would be the seven thirty-two thousand a year. Yes, East Cobb Library is currently the second busiest library, but the same services offered here would be in a much larger space and more with the cultural arts center just five miles away. We also have two regional libraries within a seven mile radius of the East Cobb Library, Mountain View and Switzer. I love our libraries and I appreciate our patrons, but at the same time, I must be a good steward of taxpayer money. For years, the plan has been to close the smaller libraries in favor of regional libraries. Other districts agreed to close smaller satellite libraries in favor of a regional library, and this action is underway already. To own one space and lease another that duplicates services within five miles of each other is not being a good steward of taxpayer money. The monies paid for the lease can be used to fund public safety personnel. I can't justify spending taxpayer monies in such an irresponsible manner. This is one suggestion for the board to consider. Being twenty-one million dollars of one-time money in the fiscal year eighteen budget, we have to look at non-essential items to reduce our costs and sustain the budget in eighteen and two, and two thousand and nineteen and beyond. I'm not suggesting that we close the East Cobb Library as soon as we open Sewell Mill. However, a trans, a transition period of six months to a year should be sufficient. The funding for the new library and cultural arts center has been removed from the eighteen budget, and will come back to us to prove as a separate agenda item in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford? Thank you, sir. I got a couple of announcements. Wanted to mention that Harrison High School Women's Volleyball Team won their third straight county title. They beat Lassiter.
Uh-oh. You better get them up here.
And I will get them up here, yeah. So I wanted to let, let that know, we are bringing several of the teams up here in September to recognize, and from our district. There's Community Recycle Day this Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from nine to five at Lassiter High School in the upper parking lot. If you want to recycle any number of things from computers and fax machines, power tools, lawn mowers, well, if you want to recycle those, I'll take those. And, but there's going to be a recycling place at Harrison High School this weekend. I also wanted to thank Helen for getting me some, some glasses. Since the chairman realized that it would only be two of us at the work session, he let me off that afternoon, and I was able to go to the lake and float around, and those glasses are not waterproof. I just wanted to point that out. So next time, in ninety-nine years, I expect some waterproof glasses. But it was a fun time, and I enjoyed that. So, thanks for that and all the good work that everybody did during the event. I know a lot's been mentioned off and on about the park bond, I just want everyone to know that we, as a board, have been working diligently to acquire properties. We're not at liberty to say where, or when, or what, because of the sensitive nature and that. But we have run into some snags where people decided not to sell their property after they thought they would. And so, you know, it's not this board's fault, but we're doing our best, and we're working diligently to acquire those properties, and can assure you that, that will continue. As far as the budget is concerned, and some of the things that Commissioner Broll stated and others, you know, stated that I said, the paper, you know, I was going one way or both the other. I don't vote in the paper, I give statements, and then facts change, and then things happen. For years, since I've been here, I've looked at several sources of revenue to increase our budget and do things, and some were identified. And I think that we are now using some of those monies that have been sitting there for seven, eight, nine, ten years, some forty-something million dollars. So I don't see why we can't use that to do what we need to do, and make some cuts for things that are not being utilized properly, and keep the things that are. And I don't have a problem working with that and working with the chairman and this board to do that. So, don't underestimate the work that this board does every day trying to find ways to do our budget, provide the services we need, and make sure that we're giving the best service to the county. And with that, I'm through, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I may not be brief in my comments, I apologize. We have a lot of events going on in the district, and I also want to make some comments with respect to the budget. Some upcoming things we have going on is this Saturday, we have our HOA boot camp. It will be held at the Smyrna Community Center from ten AM to two PM. This will be the second year that we've conducted this workshop, and hope that many of you will attend it and learn more about managing your homeowners' associations. Also on Saturday, Wade Ford is continuing its concert series, and there'll be a number of bands that will be playing at the Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater, which includes Loose Ends, Kindred the Family Soul, and Mike Phillips, and that will be at six PM, and tickets will be sold at Ticketmaster. Also, there will be an inaugural Gospel Fest presented by Bridges of Success Academy the next day, on the twenty-seventh, and some notable gospel artists will be playing, including Virtue and Dr. Cynthia Winthrop, and Touch of Faith will also be performing. And that will also be at the Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater, and that's on Sunday, and there are two showtimes at three PM and at six PM. Bear with me, so I'll look through this. We have a continuation of design guideline meetings to address some of our corridors, and our next one will address the Oster Road corridor. And I encourage you to go online and look at our community development homepage for more information about meetings that will come up to, to get the public's input on our design guidelines for that roadway. Next, coming up on Thursday, September fourteenth, we'll have the Annual Career Expo that's held in conjunction with both Cobb County and Marietta, and conducted by WorkSource Cobb. That will be Thursday, September fourteenth, from ten AM to two PM at the Cobb County Civic Then that weekend, we have our annual Wellness Day event in South Cobb, and it will kick off with a race that morning, and the race starts at eight o'clock AM. To register, go to WellnessDaySouthCobb.com, and the fee is a fifteen dollars to participate. Later that day, until about two, there'll be events for the family to talk about wellness in the district. I feel like for the past three meetings, we've had a lot of discussion with respect to our budget, and this is not an easy situation that the board is in, and I have been here on the board for the past five years, and this process seems to become more and more frustrating every year. The budget is a significance to the district and the county because it has direct correlation to what services can be provided and at what levels. Since joining the board in two thousand and thirteen, the budget has been a challenge because, in major part due to the recession in two thousand and eleven. And since then, the county has cut services, it's also cut compensation of employees by way of merit, in anticipation that the county would eventually come out of recession. Today, many would argue that the county and country are out of that recession. Still, there are various indicators that show that not all people in all areas have bounced back, and that includes Cobb County's budget. Limited services such as shorter library hours, longer responsiveness on right-of-way cleanup, and deteriorating facilities seem to be becoming a mainstay of our county. This waning of services and assets are a screaming contradiction to the new development of our Braves Stadium and surrounding development. So the question becomes, how Cobb can be growing and yet need to raise taxes? And also, how can Cobb's tax base grow and yet services and service levels not be adequately addressed? I think there are a myriad of factors that have created this situation. Not all that I can fully grasp, but some factors that I have observed include aging capital assets that have not had a regular, robust maintenance plan, increase of our county assets through SPOS programming without commensurate staffing levels, a growing population and demands on services without commensurate staff levels, Cobb's commitment to provide top service with limited funding and staffing resources, modernization in changing times that compel new and different services, federal and state regulations that require certain service levels that are at risk of being jeopardized, millage appropriation to parks, inclusive of SunTrust Park and the county parks bond, and increasing pay of some of our employees to bring their compensation back to market levels. None of these factors that I've shared fully convey the day-to-day requests that my office feels on various issues, such as stormwater maintenance, right-of-way cleanup, community programming, needed bus services, and unkept facilities, to name a few. Too often, the limited resources that our county has exacted no or later responses to our constituent requests, even though fixes are often obvious, low-hanging, and even pressing. Money seems to, and manpower seem to be the limiting resources. Each day, I get some type of correspondence about District Four residents who are mad about the disparity in amenities and public assets compared to other parts of the county, and I share that same frustration. And every day, I field these requests and look for ways to get the district more funding and programming and development to prove, to improve our position. But as was shared by many of the speakers tonight, this is like a twenty-four by seven task, in which our district also faces socioeconomic issues on a larger scale than other areas of the county. District Four has had some budgetary and programmatic wins in the past. We have cut the right-of-way maintenance time in half to a twenty-two day cycle from forty-five days since I have been in office. Still, we field calls frequently on accumulating trash and weeds along our roadways. We have been successful in increasing code enforcement staff by two to three officers, yet still having a dozen officers for a county of seven hundred and fifty thousand people is not a realistic way of addressing challenges across the district and county. We have been successful in voicing a need for more community-oriented policing and encouraging more officers to wear body cameras. Still, many of our B officers go without them, which not only makes citizens, but the officers more vulnerable. We have added a new bus route twenty-five and flex bus services, yet commissioners now contemplating cutting flex bus, which has never been adequately marketed. More disheartening is a lack of strong conversation about how rail and other rapid transit services can improve economic development and workforce development for the county and district. Addressing the day-to-day issues and broader needs of our community takes dollars. When our board has conversations about cutting buses, closing libraries, and cutting employees, and foregoing mirror pay, while ignoring repeated requests from staff and other elected officials on the challenges they face in providing basic levels of services or mandates, it seems glaringly clear that Cobb has a handicap in addressing today's needs and tomorrow's imperatives, especially when it comes to District Four. One of the most pressing requests I get is to attract quality neighborhood amenities to the area. I think many of the public would be surprised to learn that we have one staff member in economic development for a county of seven hundred and fifty thousand people. With this type of resource allocation, it is more than a notion to improve the economic outlook of our district beyond the industrial and discount hotbed it has become. I have observed the county kick a can of promises to fund improved service levels across the county and district, year after year after painful year. I have done my best to be a team player on our board in years past to improve, to approve limited budgets because of limited wins and hopes that the next year will be different. I have come to the painful realization that these limited wins and hopes of next year's fulfilled promises have not translated into wins for all of Cobb residents and all of Cobb communities. The areas where residents complain the most of tax increases surprisingly are the areas that have the most development and investment in our county. While I hear their concern, I am not convinced that a less than twenty-dollar tax increase for a home of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is more burdensome than a county that provides less than adequate service levels, which make our county more vulnerable. I am not convinced that cutting employees and their pay will produce a better outcome when we continue to field emails and calls about inadequate service levels, and when a study of an advisory board selected by commissioners during the recession showed that there were no areas left to cut. What causes me more concern is that to balance ongoing operational need of our county commissioners, excuse me, to balance operational need, our county commissioners are proposing that we use one-time money, including our economic contingency fund, to offset ongoing year-to-year expenses. I don't understand how this is prudent to use funds saved for a rainy day to balance our budget, especially when commissioners have said over and over again in the past that one-time money should not be used to offset ongoing expenses. I have no desire to pay more taxes than anyone else in the county, and sympathize with those who struggle to make ends meet or will. I just find it more than ironic that I have more support from people in my district, the most moderate-income district of the four, in ensuring our millage and budget match constituent need and desire for investment. I encourage District Four residents to pay close attention to this debate and ensure that your voice is heard and your concerns are addressed. While my voice may not be enough, maybe your voice will be. I encourage you that if you are not at our budget hearing tonight, that you will come to our next budget hearing, which will be on our second Tuesday meeting in September, I believe that date is the twelfth. And if you cannot attend, please tune in and watch the recordings, and email all of our commissioners to let them know that District Four and all of Cobb County should be represented when big dollar decisions are made that not only impact us today, but tomorrow. Those are my comments.
Commissioner? And I have no comments. I have to wish everybody a good night, and thank you for staying. So with that, I call this meeting to adjournment. So with that, I call this meeting to adjournment.